Alright, everybody. I apologize for that. I was having some computer issues, but it looks like everything is up and going. As far as commissioners go, it looks like we're still waiting on some. I don't see, for example, I don't see, Commissioner Williamson in the waiting room. Let's see. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay, great, good.
Yeah, sorry, I'm eating dinner.
Totally cool, I totally get it. Okay, so I'm just going to keep admitting everybody and then we can start the recording and give it a few more minutes to make sure we have everything set up. Alright. So it looks like I don't have anybody else waiting in the waiting room. And, I will get the recording started. Alright, it is now recording. Chair Baker, when you are ready.
Thanks Erin, it looks like I've got seven commissioners on, which is enough to start.
Commissioner Hagforst did mention that they were going to be absent this evening.
Okay, thank you.
But I did not receive any official correspondence regarding the absence.
Thank you, alrighty. Then who is our, who's our city clerk tonight?
That would be me, Jordan Smalley.
Hey Jordan, great. If my count is correct, I've got Quorum. So I'm ready to start when you are.
Alrighty, Commissioner Azar.
Here.
Commissioner Brazen.
Here.
Commissioner Foster.
Here.
Commissioner Hagforst.
He'll be absent this evening.
Okay, Commissioner Husky. Alright, Commissioner Pollock.
Sorry, one hand, Husky's here.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Pollocka.
Here.
Commissioner Schwalter.
Here.
And Chair Baker.
Here, thank you, and that was the roll call for the Planning Commission meeting of the City of Ferndale. This is Wednesday, December the 2nd. It is 6:34 right now PM. We've got five, seven Planning Commissioners. Could I get a motion for an excused absence from, for Commissioner Hagforst?
This is Commissioner Brazen to excuse Hagforst and Williamson. Foster seconds.
Thank you, that was a motion from Commissioner Brazen with a second from Commissioner Foster to excuse the absences of Commissioners Hagforst and Williamson. Jordan, just because we're on Zoom, it's usually easier to, or clearer, if not easier, to do roll call votes rather than, you know, sort of me asking for all in favor. So even though this is just a little one, we'll do a roll call vote to excuse those commissioners, please.
Sure. I won't be rotating the alphabetical progression this meeting just because I'm still fairly new to this, so I'm going to keep it the same order all evening.
Sounds good, thanks.
Alright, Commissioner Azar.
Yes.
Commissioner Brazen.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Husky.
Yes.
Commissioner Pollocka. Sorry, Councilman Pollocka.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwalter.
Yep, yes.
And Chair Baker.
Yes, thank you, that motion passes. Alright, we'll move on to item number two, the approval of tonight's agenda. Erin, do we have any changes to the agenda tonight?
I do have an old business item that I need to bring up with the Planning Commission regarding the payment in lieu of parking. Just got an item that we had for a public hearing last. Just need a little bit of clarification from the Commission.
Thank you, so we will add item number 5A under Old Business, Clarification on Payment in Lieu of Parking. That's not an action item, correct Erin? That's just a, you've got a clarification question?
Yep, just a clarification.
Thank you. Alright, with that-
Approve the agenda as amended?
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Pollocka, support.
Great, I've got a motion from Commissioner Azar with a second from Councilman Pollocka to approve the agenda as amended. We'll have a roll call vote on that from our clerk.
Commissioner Azar.
Yes.
Commissioner Brazen.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Husky.
Yes.
Councilman Pollocka.
You're muted.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwalter.
Yes.
Chair Baker.
Yes, thank you, that motion passes. Alright, we'll move on to item number 3A, the Approval of the Minutes of November 18th, 2020. Are there any edits, changes, additions to those minutes from the Commission?
Through the chair, this is Councilman Pollocka. I have one correction. It is a state from, a statement from me on page 5. It's regarding, it's about two-thirds down the list, it says Pollocka. With regard to Kramer, are we going to require him to add two EV stations? We just took away his exemption, same with upper residential units. I don't think 5,000 to 8,000 square feet shouldn't be required to pay, it should be, should be. I don't think 5,000 to 8,000 square feet should be required to pay for EV stations. Not shouldn't.
Thanks, Councilman. Was that clear on your end, city clerk?
Yes, give me one moment to finish writing it, but yes, the, the request is clear.
Thank you. Any other corrections, comments, additions from the Commission?
Foster moves to approve the minutes as presented with the amendment by Councilman Pollocka.
Second by Brazen.
Thank you, I've got a mission, a motion by Commissioner Foster with a second by Commissioner Brazen to accept the minutes as amended. I will have a roll call vote when you are ready, city clerk.
Commissioner Azar.
Yes.
Commissioner Brazen.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Husky.
Yes.
Councilman Pollocka.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwalter.
Yes.
And Chair Baker.
Yes, the motion passes, thank you. Alright, we'll move on to item number four, the Call to Audience. This is the time for anyone in the audience tonight to address the Planning Commission on anything that's not on the agenda. So just a quick review of the agenda so that people know what's coming up. We've just added an old business item. Our city staff has a question for us regarding the payment in lieu of parking motion, or I'm sorry, recommendation from our last meeting. We also have a discussion item related to a preliminary PUD discussion for East Nine Mile. We have an administrative item this evening related to public notice requirements and community engagement. Then we've got two commission items. Commissioner Schwalter will be sharing some information, excuse me, related to some ongoing conversations on architectural materials and some information on fences I'm looking forward to. Think I'd look for defenses. So if there's anyone here that has something they'd like to address the Planning Commission on that is not on the agenda, because you'll have a chance to comment on those other items when we get to those items. You've got three minutes, please state your name and address for the record. You can address the Planning Commission on anything not on tonight's agenda. If you would use the raise hand function in Zoom, or Erin, if you would remind people how to comment via phone. Erin, are you helping me monitor this tonight?
Yeah, so when we get to, yeah, the Call to Audience section or any other subsequent participation from the folks either calling in or via Zoom, we'll go with everybody with their hand raised first, and at the end I will open it up to the folks that are phoning in and read off the last digits of that phone number and then you're welcome to speak. So that's, that's the order of operations for everything. And at this time, I do not see any hands raised at this time.
You can use the raise hand function, you can turn on your video and wave your hand at us, either works.
I'm still not seeing anything, and the only call in we have, the last three digits are 3, 4, 3. So if the person who is phoning in has any comments, you're welcome to unmute yourself and ask those questions.
Erin, for anyone on the phone, what, what do they need to push to unmute themselves? Or Jordan, if you remember, or Greg? You guys do this more often than I do.
I thought it was star 4, but I could be mistaken now.
I believe it is star 4.
Excuse me?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, there's no raised hand for, on the screen to click?
Would someone share where to find the the raised hand icon?
If you're using Zoom, to find the raise hand feature, you need to open the Participants panel. So if you go to the bottom of your screen on a computer or open the menu on your mobile device, click the Participants button to see the list of everyone who is currently in the meeting. And with that panel open, at the bottom of the panel, you'll see three buttons, one of which is Raise Hand.
Thanks, Jordan. Alrighty, I think we do have a raised hand there, Erin?
Yeah, it looks like the name is Elster.
Welcome, you've got three minutes, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Good evening. Evelyn Elster, West Strayton. Different rules for this particular Zoom meeting, I guess. What I'd like to say, considering the property turnover being so high and an influx of new buyers in Ferndale, I would like to propose a welcome packet of sorts which can be distributed either by the city through mail or to the realtors selling the properties. This would have a list of amenities, but also guidelines as to what is expected of homeowners in Ferndale. We are not a lawless society here, we are good neighbors. Somehow convey, for example, somehow convey that we like trees here in Ferndale and discourage clearcutting of property somehow? That we have regulations and code of ordinance? And maybe you could supply links? That permits have to be pulled for certain activities in Ferndale? And I think if we were to do this, that it would make things a lot easier on the DPW, on the Police Department, on code enforcement, and pretty much smooth things over if people know what's expected of them. That we aren't lawless here in Ferndale. And just an idea, throwing it out there, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, anyone else for Call to Audience at this time?
I just admitted another person that was in the waiting room, so I'm just waiting for them to fully join to see if perhaps they had a comment. It just seems that there's a bit of a lag, so just wait that a moment.
Thanks Erin, we are on item number four, this is our Call to Audience. A time for anyone in the audience to address the Planning Commission on anything that's not on the agenda this evening. You can use the raise hand function on Zoom. Or was it Zoom or was it a phone?
Oh, it was somebody that looked like they were joining by Zoom and it looked like they're now joined, so if anybody has a comment, please, as Chair Baker mentioned, raise your hand or wave your hand if you cannot locate that button.
You can find the raise hand function under the Participants feature at the bottom of Zoom, or just turn your camera on and wave your hand at us, we'll look for you. Okay.
Didn't appear that there are any raised hands.
Alrighty, we will move on to item number five, this is the old business item that you added Erin, related to the payment in lieu of parking recommendation from our last meeting.
Thank you. So in the last meeting, as one of the changes, we changed the the spacing between from 500 to 1,000 feet as far as proximity to parking spaces for the CBD parking exemption J3. And after speaking with our attorney, Dan Christ, it came to light that there were two other items or components of this ordinance that also make a reference to 500 feet from municipal parking or additional parking. And I wanted to bring that to the Planning Commission's attention because if the intent was specific to the CBD, which this was the Central Business District and this item was to that point, then everything is good. But if we wanted to make sure that the 500 feet was changed everywhere within this ordinance, that would be something that we need to discuss. And I'm happy to reference exactly which section I'm speaking about, so it's in the Off-Street Parking Requirements Access Management. F is Collective Shared Parking Provisions. Nothing in this article shall be construed to prevent collective provisions for off-street parking for two or more buildings or uses provided that. And in number three, it says the collective off-street parking shall not be located farther than 500 feet from the building or uses being served. So that's one, one part that makes a reference to 500 feet. And then the second part of the ordinance that makes reference to 500 feet as well is right below this in G, Reduction of Parking Requirements. The Planning Commission may reduce the parking requirements based upon a finding that there will be a lower demand for parking due to one or more of the following factors. And it's number two, Convenient Municipal Off-Street Parking or On-Street Parking Spaces are located within 500 feet that have the capacity to handle additional parking. So those are the other two areas of the ordinance that make reference to 500 feet. For consistency, I wasn't sure if the note was too specific to CBD parking or if we wanted to make those additional changes. It's very confusing and that was a lot, so if you need clarification, please let me know.
Thanks Erin, so to clarify, the, the other two places where 500 feet is referenced, those are much broader than just CBD, those are other zoning districts, right?
Correct.
Okay, great. My recollection, when Erin and I talked about this yesterday, was that and I don't remember who made the comment, maybe it was Councilman Pollocka? Was it Michelle? About the you know, sort of the downtown distance in particular, you know, if you park at the back of the Withington lot and you walk to Flip, you've probably already walked you know, more than 500 feet. So I think the relevance was CBD specific, but I definitely wanted to to double check because if we wanted to make it broader, we'd need to renotice this and put it back through the Commission before it goes to council. Commissioner Foster?
So it looks like the, the comment in G, it does state municipal parking within 500 street, whether it's on, on-street or off-street. The collective or shared parking provision, was that the other one? I kind of, you were going quickly while I was trying to pull them up.
Yes, that is correct.
So, and so that one is that the collective off-street parking shall be not within, or not farther than 500 feet from buildings or services. So I think that personally, I'm super comfortable with the 500 from municipal because that sort of implies CBD, because we don't, or I don't even know how many municipal. Okay, I guess I have a question, does that mean, does any on-street parking then? Sort, since that would be a public roadway, I suppose it would.
Collective off-street parking should not be, and then the capacity municipal, municipal off-street or on-street spaces. That one specifically mentions on-street spaces, the collective and shared just mentions off-street parking, shall not be located further than 500 feet.
I guess I'm trying to make the distinction of, you know, if there's municipal provided parking, typically that would be within the CBD anyways, at least in regards to off-street parking. Obviously, it's a separate situation if it's on-street, just public parking, that was located with, anywhere within Ferndale. And then the 500 feet from a building for the collective off-shared. I guess what I'm trying to get at is there's these are just different kind of benchmarks, I suppose. And so I'm wondering if our council was weary of providing a different threshold of the 500 to 1,000 and if some of these obviously are fairly related, you know, we have that 500-foot threshold, but we could look at them maybe in a different view. And then my second thought on the matter is I would be comfortable with the proposed changes that we had approved at the last meeting and then looking at these other ones you know, to, at a different date. But I don't, again, I don't know if council was advising against that.
It hasn't gone to council yet, actually Erin caught this with Dan before it went to council.
Legal council, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, got it.
Yeah, there, there was honestly no indication or preference either way, it was more of a clarification on the intent from Planning Commission on whether or not this was just specific to the Central Business District as Section J, or Section J kind of indicates, or if it was wanting to be consistent throughout with that 1,000-foot versus 500-foot threshold. So more of a clarification on preference and intent for the previous motion and recommendation for approval.
Other commissioners? My, I mean, my sense was that this was most appropriate in the CBD, and I recall us talking most specifically about the CBD. But if we wanted to, if, if we wanted to have a more in-depth discussion about this, we would need to renotice it, have another public hearing, and then send something consolidated to City Council, rather than do it piecemeal.
Through, through the chair, I, I concur. My recollection was that this was a CBD discussion. And honestly, I'm not aware of any parking parking lots or meters that are outside of the CBD.
If I may again, having been the one to bring it up at our last meeting, I think also just as a reminder, the discussion was, well, since we're already changing this and we were looking at that J section specifically, we said, well, why, we might as well change this, I think everyone agreed. I think that I was not intending to hold up the other language, just trying to add this on as we all thought it was a good idea. And so again, personally, I think I'd be comfortable with moving forward with this and then discussing the others with a potential separate notice.
Okay, I guess I just want to make sure, so our, the request that has come from City Council in the past has been that we do things comprehensively, so rather than doing a separate notice just for this, if we want to talk about 500 to 1,000 outside of the CBD, we'd need to notice it and do it in January before it goes to council. So is there any, anyone on the Planning Commission who would like to do a second public hearing to talk more specifically about shared parking distances, changing shared parking distances outside of the CBD? I do not hear a giant chorus. Alright, Erin, I think you've got your direction.
Okay.
We were, we were talking about the CBD.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, can I just clarify, so we cannot change the Section J as we had discussed last time?
No, we can, we can, it was just more for consistency if, if we wanted to make changes elsewhere to that same threshold, we would just have to renotice it and go through the formal process again, you know, certainly. And if that was going to impact the discussion that we had previously for the CBD discussion that we had, just wanting to make sure that all the changes were provided to council at the same time for that particular item. I, I will say though too, we all recognize that there were additional parking discussions to be had and that the discussion last time was specific to the CBD. So if there were future amendments that needed to be made to the parking, this is the same ordinance that has the other elements of parking and it could be addressed at that time as well. Just offering that up for clarification too.
Alright, thanks Erin. You got your direction?
So we're cool, we're good, we can move forward with sending this to council.
Yes ma'am.
Great, thank you very much, I apologize for that, that was, that was a lot of very confusing back and forth, but I appreciate the the last minute discussion on that.
No apology needed, better to catch it than to come back over and over again to the same thing. Alright, item number six, we do not have any new business this evening. So we'll move right on to really the, the meat of our meeting. This is a discussion item, there is no action on this item tonight. Item number seven, a preliminary PUD discussion for East Nine Mile. So we will, let's see, I have a note, Commissioner Foster is going to recuse herself from this discussion. Is that accurate, Michelle? Okay, thank you. The again, there's no action on this item tonight, but what we're going to do is we'll have an introduction from our city staff. Then we will have the applicant share whatever they've brought to share with us this evening. Then we'll take questions and comments from the audience. And then we'll work through those questions and comments, we'll see if we can get some answers. Make sure that we got feedback on the floor for the applicant. And then the Planning Commission will weigh in with any questions or comments for the applicant. So we will start with our city staff.
Great, thank you. So this is a preliminary PUD discussion of 503 East Nine Mile. And this was a previous, just general discussion in front of Planning Commission on October 7th of this year. This was originally brought forth by the developers to kind of discuss if this would be something that the city would be interested in and Planning Commission would be interested in as well. The development is an affordable housing development specifically targeted towards LGBTQ individuals. It is a development that spans two different zoning districts with three parcels in total, which is one of the reasons why it was recommended to move forward with the PUD process, which is the Planned Unit Development. As part of the preliminary PUD discussion, this was added a couple years ago to help facilitate these larger projects. And so the reason why we bring it as discussion first in front of Planning Commission is to give everybody a chance to weigh in a little bit with these larger projects. And as Chair Baker mentioned, there's no decision point at this, this particular point. They would have to come forward with an actual PUD application which involves a site plan review, it involves a PUD development agreement and, which some of which we'll probably discuss today. The development is, is seeking grant funding through MISTHA, which is the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, that affords affordable housing developments such as these. um, that affords, uh, affordable housing developments such as these, um, with grant monies to help see through this, um, project through fruition. Um, the applicant previously provided some concept drawings and they have additional, um, drawings and concepts that they would like to, um, present this evening. And, um, with that, I will turn it over to the applicant to give a little bit more detail about the project. And then, um, at the end too, then we can talk about next steps and, and what those would be. So with that, I would actually like to ask the applicant, um, to whom should I make the co-host so that they can share their screen?
Can you make me the co-host, Erin?
Is that?
James, James, yeah.
Absolutely, yep.
Thank you.
All right, and I just want to make sure that we note for the city clerk, I should, um, should have, uh, done it about ten minutes ago. Commissioner Williamson has joined the meeting. So, uh, he is here with us now.
Thank you.
You should be getting access, uh, James, just let me know when you have that. And feel free to share your screen with that presentation. And I did load it as well. So if you have any technical difficulties, I can pull that up.
Looks like we're, we're all set. Um, Carl's gonna kick us off here.
Thanks, James. Uh, thank you to Plan Commission for having us back tonight to present our project. Um, I'm Carl Kunda, Senior Project Manager at Full Circle Communities. I'm joined, uh, by my colleague James, Project Manager, um, Lindsay Haynes, Vice President of Real Estate Development at Full Circle, along with our project architect, um, Jack from Landon Bone Baker. I'm just going to give a really quick overview of sort of where the project concept came from and then turn it over to James to to give a rundown on what we're, what we're presenting and what we're looking for in terms of the, the PUD process. Um, so like I said, I'm from Full Circle Communities. We are a nonprofit affordable housing developer, owner and property management company. We're based in the city of Chicago, though we work in three states. Uh, we have just over a thousand units currently placed in service with a couple hundred, I think, coming online in twenty twenty-one. Um, we operate a fairly innovative development model. Uh, we return seventy-five cents of every dollar that we earn doing our developments to providing services back to tenants of, of our projects. Um, but we are not service providers ourselves. We look to the communities that we serve to identify high-capacity service providers. And then we contract with them and pay them to provide services to our tenants. Um, with this specific project, uh, the origin story actually went back to twenty fifteen, um, which was the start of when I had conversations with the Ruth Ella Center, which is a Detroit-based nonprofit that was looking to do permanent supportive housing for an LGBTQ youth population. And out of that, we were introduced to leadership at Metropolitan Community Church of Detroit, MCCD, who were working with their congregation and the needs that they were seeing for older LGBTQ individuals and finding accessible affordable housing that they could age in place in. Um, so that sort of started our journey, I believe, back in the summer of twenty sixteen, exploring this concept with city staffers and trying to find lands that would meet the demands and competitive needs of the state funding agency, would have the types of amenities that would be a good fit for housing of this type. And then finally would, you know, convey some benefit to the surrounding community. And finally, four years later, we have been fortunate enough to identify, which I think is a really excellent site for, um, for a development of this type and have an exciting, I think, development proposal to share with everybody, uh, on the call. So with that, turn it over to James.
Thanks Carl. Um, so as Carl mentioned, I'm the Project Manager with, with Full Circle. Um, here's our, our mission statement here on the left. In partnership with this project, we're working with Community Housing Network out of Detroit to be our primary service provider. As Carl had mentioned, Laina Bone Baker, who's on the call with us tonight, is our architect. And then we're working with the contractor, O'Brien Construction, who's done a lot of work in Michigan and really does a lot of work in the tax credit program, um, to be our general contractor and builder as we work through this project if we're lucky enough to get funded. I thought it might be helpful to start off by touching on some of the conversation topics. Um, when this project was first introduced, as Erin mentioned, at the October Plan Commission meeting, just kind of some general themes that poured out of the discussion. Um, community partnerships, you talked, you already heard Carl kind of talk about the local partnerships that got this development started. And we'll talk a little later about our process for engaging the community moving forward and all the partnerships that will have to kind of come together to bring this project to fruition. Um, at the previous meeting, it was discussed that we should talk with the team over at, at SMART. Um, one of the action items from Ferndale's master plan was to coordinate improving transit stops with new developments like this one. So we've met with the team over at SMART and we are working to incorporate the space for a new transit stop in front of this development. Um, the proposed plan would relocate the existing stop that's currently in front of the CVS or Walgreens, I think it's a CVS. Um, and relocating in front of this building would allow for an approved transit stop facility. Right now, it's, it's just a sign, so things like benches or coverings, we could explore here. Green space, um, this was noted as something that's centrally important to residents of Ferndale. So our revised plans that we'll present tonight retain the almost three thousand square foot green space as part of this development at the corner of Paxton Investor. First floor activation, um, being this is a main commercial corridor along Nine Mile, it was discussed that we should have active space. So we took that feedback and revised our floor plans to remove the ground floor residential units that we had along Nine Mile to allow for some increased activation. And you'll see that in the site plan that I share later. And then in addition, we're planning, um, somewhat of an innovative system called the Nano Wall that will open our community meeting hub and multipurpose spaces to Nine Mile to really engage pedestrians. And we'll share some information also later in the presentation regarding, uh, the usage and programming of that space. Parking demand, last but not least, um, but there were comments regarding the number of parking spots. As a result of that feedback, we're exploring a few different shared parking agreements for events that may be held at the community meeting hub with a few nearby property owners. We've also, uh, worked with the architect and general contractor at exploring the option of adding a parking deck to accommodate some additional spots. However, at this point, we don't think it's financially feasible to, to pursue that option, nor do we think it would present a positive visual experience for residents who live along Vester. Um, and then later on in this presentation, I'll provide some data around some of our other developments that we've built and how we've handled parking at some of those properties. So here's some data that we can jump into around the community impact that we think this project provides to the city of Ferndale. Um, this is some, some information graphics I pulled from the Ferndale Community Affordability and Inclusive Housing Action Plan, um, a little bit of a mouthful. But you can see the data on this slide really shows a tremendous need for affordable housing. So the graph on the left shows a percentage of rent burden households, uh, which are those that pay greater than thirty percent of their income each month on housing. And you'll see the lower, the income, the higher percentage of them that qualify as rent burden. Um, and then on the right there, you'll see the number of cost burden households that qualify or fall into each one of those, uh, income categories. And the income, you know, the Housing Action Plan noted something I, I thought was pretty grim, but, um, between two thousand twelve and two thousand seventeen, the number of affordable residences to these population groups in the city of Ferndale decreased by almost ten percent, which I think further really shows the demand for this type of housing that's needed within the city. Um, I've also kind of just pulled out some, some quotes here that I really think it shows that our project is a direct response of the goals that the city has, has laid out. Um, but the city to pursue partnerships with nonprofit developers to increase, increase the supply of affordable housing for folks below sixty percent AMI, but also some deep income targeting to folks who are at thirty percent area median income. It calls for an increase in supply of the number of affordable senior targeted units. And then just a general call for action for those households that are severely rent burden or those that pay fifty percent of their income for rent each month. Um, so this project, we feel is a direct response to these goals that have been laid out by the city. We're providing fifty-three units of age-friendly affordable housing that we think can make a real impact to these households. The units in this development that we're proposing, you know, they'll be affordable by community residents who might be retired and rely on social security. It's affordable to those who might have a disability or rely on SSDI funding. It's affordable to retired members of the community. And it's also affordable to working households like those who might work in food service industry, individuals who work in early childhood education or hospitality industry, healthcare support workers and many others. Um, community meeting hub. So kind of our second community impact that we'll touch on, this is a sixteen hundred square foot space that we're programming as part of, uh, the project to serve the residents and other community organizations of Ferndale at, you know, no cost to them. As Carl mentioned, um, this project kind of started with conversations with the Metropolitan Community Church of Detroit. So we talked to them about programming for the space. We've talked to local LGBTQ organizations like affirmations about programming for the space, national groups like Sage, who specifically work with LGBTQ seniors. Um, we've had conversations also with the Ferndale Housing Commission then, and of course, CHN, our service provider at programming for the space, not just for our residents, but for other populations in the city of Ferndale. And you can see here on the right, some images of the Nano Wall system that I mentioned on that second slide. It's kind of like a folding glass door that really opens up the space, uh, to pedestrian activation that would be along Nine Mile. All right, next, uh, community impact centered around environmental sustainability. So also highlighted in, in the last master plan, the city of Ferndale put out in twenty seventeen, called for the city to promote sustainable design, um, called for developments to implement sustainable development principles. And, um, also laid mention to a natural landscape ordinance that was laid out, um, that called for residents to transform their yards using native plants, which I thought was a really progressive and, and interesting idea, being from Chicago, that gets a lot of flack in at least the neighborhood I live in, but it can have an incredible impact on, um, native ecosystems. So this project will be lead silver or an equivalent certification at a minimum. We're designing the project so that the rooftop will be solar ready. We have native landscaping. We'll come up with a construction materials, um, waste management plan to really minimize how much waste there is during the construction process. We're implementing EV charging stations. And then units will be furnished with Energy Star appliances, which of course provide, um, utility savings. Um, in addition, we got our, our phase one back. There's a decent amount of environmental cleanup to do on the site. There's a couple of underground storage tanks that we'll be removing as, as part of this project should it go forward. We'll move about five thousand tons of hazardous soil. And in addition, we'll be installing a vapor mitigation system underneath the building footprint at basically a total cost of right around three hundred thousand dollars is estimated by our contractor. As I mentioned earlier, um, parking demand was part of the discussion at the previous Plan Commission. So we wanted to come to this meeting with some data around similar projects that we've done. Um, I realize there's a, a lot on the screen. I'm happy to provide some more in-depth data to the Plan Commission, um, and city staff if, if needed. But I guess what's really important to pay attention here is the columns in the middle that I bolded and made the font large, maybe we should have made it a little larger so it's easier to see, but the unit count, the parking spaces, uh, the ratio and, um, the percentage of residents using parking. So what we found and what we routinely see across our portfolios that we're constantly providing too many parking spots. On average, about twenty-five percent of our residents end up utilizing a parking spot that's provided by the development. And the team feels pretty strongly that we're not going to have an issue with this project as we have in, in any of our others where the residents start demanding more parking spots than we've allotted for the project. As Carl had mentioned earlier, this project is a tremendous location for affordable housing development. It's got a very high walk score, um, which if you're not familiar with it, it's a basically an analysis of how many community amenities are within a walking distance of the site. Um, being so close to downtown Ferndale, it's an amenity-rich area. It's got a CVS, a bank, numerous dining and shopping opportunities all within a half mile of this site. So very walkable location. It serves by public transit and I know there's calls for additional bike lanes, um, for some other multimodal transportation options in the near future. We've also talked to SMART, um, about some other alternative transportation options that might be available aside from their kind of routine bus service. There's the SMART Connector Service, uh, which serves for pre-planned rides within just the city of Ferndale limits. There are smart transportation services, which is similar to the Connector Service, but serves, um, areas outside of Ferndale. They offer a paratransit service that could be offered to our residents if we work to pre-qualify them. That would cover, um, individuals or households that have a disability. And in addition, there's, you know, a handful of ride-share options that people are utilizing today. In the past, we've also explored options of having car share on-site. I think Detroit, uh, does have a zipcar system. Um, so we're going to do some more research on that and we'll look to implement something similar here at this project. I think I'd also note here, that's, you know, part of the, the master plan land use goals that were laid out there is, um, calls for a reduction in parking minimums for projects are, are within a quarter mile of, of good transit. This project is certainly a candidate for that. Um, as you may recall, I mentioned earlier about us working with the SMART team to relocate that stop to right in front of this, this project for use by our residents and make it a more attractive option. Um, now I'm just going to briefly touch on building program and design before we open things up for public Q and A. Um, so this project is currently sitting at fifty-three units. At the October meeting, I think the option was presented with fifty-five units. However, shifting some of those ground floor units off of Nine Mile to allow for a more active, active space, slightly, uh, reduce our unit count. It's still a mix of one and two-bedroom apartments. As Carl mentioned, it's an age-friendly development. So it's not, you know, senior restricted, but we're targeting LGBTQ elders. And then as with all for Full Circle projects, that's kind of a service-rich housing model, there will be significant supportive services that are offered to our tenants. And then you'll see a nice little updated rendering right there. Um, this is a corner here facing Nine Mile. Uh, so you could see some of the building frontage there with some landscaping that we've added into the rendering. This next image here is just to show how the building is laid out, um, on the site and just to kind of show some scale. So you'll see it's pretty close in scale to nearby buildings. Um, I think important, you know, missing from this Google Earth screenshot is the, uh, four-story building that's going up. I think it's a four oh nine on nine development that's, uh, right across the street on Paxton. Um, this is a slide and, you know, a lot of these images were included in the, the agenda packets, but um, this is a ground floor and site plan. You could see, I don't know if you can see my cursor now, but here in the top left-hand corner, Paxton Investor, the public green space that I talked about earlier that we've retained. And in the image here on the right, we just kind of wanted to provide a close-up of how we've shifted, uh, the active uses to locations along Nine Mile, including the community meeting hub, another multipurpose community space, uh, shared kitchen, computer lab and fitness room as amenities for our tenants. Um, here are just kind of some representative images from some recent projects that we've developed. Uh, please excuse the, the lack of furniture and, and the one on the right, you'll see there's still a ladder in there. Due to COVID, we weren't, you know, able to get in and take finished photographs. Due to COVID, we weren't, you know, able to get in and take finished photographs, but you know, as we're in the progress of developing unit plans and coming up with finishes, you know, we're still really early in that process of the project, but welcome feedback. For building materials, I'll share some color options on the next slide that we're looking, you know, for some feedback on. But central to this design are, you know, two very durable, long-lasting materials, uh, brick and a fiber cement siding. So for brick, we're proposing like a varied red and brown brick with some representative images there. And then the other product is a fiber cement board. It's got like a fifty-year life expectancy, comes in tons of standard colors and you can make custom colors, you know, at a, at a price premium, but it comes in a, you know, a smooth finish like the images on the left or almost like a wood-like appearance, like the image on the right. And then here are just a few different color options we're looking at that I'll, I'll flip through. The brick is the same throughout all of them as are the grayish white all the way on the right-hand side of, of the building. I'll flip through them, you know, somewhat quickly, but I'll go slow. So color palette option one with a custom painted yellow and evening blue accent. Color palette option two. And last but not least, color palette option three. I'll throw them again. And yeah, back to the beginning. So, you know, Carl, is there anything else you'd like to add before we open things up for public Q and A? All right, Erin, we'll turn it back over to you.
Great, thank you. And I turn it over to Chair Baker so she can continue on with the process.
Thanks Erin, thanks James. Alrighty, so it is, at least I find it easier to to do any type of comment when I can see people's faces. So James, if you would stop screen sharing for the moment, so that we can kind of get the perfect, the grid view back up. Thank you very much. Makes it a little bit easier, at least for me, to see who's muting and unmuting and what's going on. Okay, so we've got a project, sounds like that has been lost in a thought process since about two thousand and sixteen that is here before us for a discussion item. Again, there is no action on this item tonight, but we do want to make sure that we get any questions, comments from the public. This is a discussion item, so this is a great time to, to ask questions of the developer, to share any thoughts or feedback. What we will, what we'll typically do with things like this, I will take everyone's questions and comments, makes it go a little bit faster. So if you're interested, if you have any questions or comments tonight, you can use the, the raise hand feature, which is located in the part, as a part of the participant button at the bottom of your Zoom screen. If you're not able to find that, you can just turn your camera on and wave your hand at us and Erin and I will keep an eye out. But we want to invite anyone from the public who's here with a question or a comment on the preliminary PUD discussion for five zero three East Nine Mile to state your name and address for the record. And please feel free to ask away.
All right, it looks like the first person with their hand up is Mike Flores.
Wonderful. Welcome, Mike.
Good evening, can you hear me? All right, good evening, commissioners. So I'm actually going to be wearing two hats, one as a resident and then one as somebody who's part of the LGBT community working with social determinants of health and housing being one of them. So my first hat is as a resident, Mike Flores on Ferndale on Wellington Street. And one of, one of the criticisms that I've seen kind of prevalent in our community is all these new developments are all kind of basically looking the same. And so I was wondering if, I would like to challenge the developers and the architects to see if there's a way to make that building more interesting. When I first saw it last night, it just reminded me of, of the new four oh nine that just went up and the Ferndale House and then like any other building in Royal Oak. There's nothing interesting really about the building versus challenges, obviously because this is affordable housing. But anything that can be done to make the building more interesting, more architecturally interesting, would be, I think, a welcome feature in our, in our community. So now I'm going to put on my other hat. So for disclosure, I work for Corktown Health Center, which is an LGBTQ plus health center in the city of Detroit, and we address many social determinants of health, including housing. And one of the things that we see a lot with our clients is when they do go to centers, institutions that provide affordable housing, it's very difficult for those types of places that are not familiar with LGBTQ community members to deal with all the different revenue sources that they may have to subsidize their housing. Especially when we think of older adults, we're thinking of the Ryan White Program, which a lot of people aren't aware of, a lot of institutions aren't aware of. And I'm trying to understand if the people here today are going to be managing the tenants or if they're just developers, they're going to be someone else that's going to be managing kind of how that building is going to be run, because I think that's going to be critical in terms of providing an affirming space, especially for older adults. Being very familiar with all the different programs that are available for low-income individuals, especially those that are very specific to the LGBTQ plus community, like the Ryan White Program. And if you're not familiar with the Ryan White Program, this is a federal program for people living with HIV that grants them access to additional funds to address determinants of health, like housing, food insecurity, and so forth.
Thank you. We'll take our next comment. We'll just work through all of our questions and comments. And then we'll, we'll come back and work with the developers to answer them.
The next one is Todd Bates.
Welcome.
Thank you, appreciate you being here to speak. My name is Todd Bates. I live at five fifty Rosewood Street, which neighbors the property in question. Just wanted to take the opportunity to say that their lack of a plan for sufficient parking for the residents, based on the data that they were giving there, you're looking at, based on the one and two-bedroom housing mix, they're looking at about almost seventy people living in the building and twenty-five parking spaces. They mentioned that they expect only twenty-five percent of the residents to utilize the parking spaces, and that would say that they only need seventeen. I, I just kind of find it an exceptional idea for seventy adults to only use seventeen parking spaces. Living in this block, we already have an issue with parking. With the addition of some of the restaurants in the area, we find every weekend, parking on the street is nearly impossible to find. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. All right, we'll take our next.
The next one is Sarah Jelary. I apologize if I mispronounced your last name.
Welcome, Sarah.
Hi, I live at four thirteen Vester. I actually own the property directly across from the two houses that they would like to demolish. There are families that live in those homes, so that's an issue right there. Second of all, our street is full of children that play and they have that parking lot in the plans to open up onto our street, which I'm very concerned about safety for the children. We already have had an issue with traffic since the opening of the Voyager and now the four oh nine building. People drive down our street going much faster than the twenty-five miles an hour that is posted with having access to their parking lot directly across from my home. That's very concerning. I also have a concern for the amount of parking. As the last person has already stated, we have issues with that. We can't find enough parking on the street as it is, especially since the other construction has finished. The other concern is the amount of time it's going to take for this to be built. We just lived through well over a year of construction with the four oh nine building and the construction was starting at like six thirty in the morning, which is extremely early and disrespectful to the neighborhood here. There's still a metal plate over a hole that people drive over and bangs every time a car drives over it. And those are the kind of problems that I foresee for years if we have a project like this going up. Although I support the the purpose of this building. I don't really appreciate it being right here. This is not why I purchased this home in this neighborhood. I wanted homes around me. I'm worried about the value of my property and the safety for all the children on the street. It just, I wish that it wasn't coming into the neighborhood by bringing it all the way back to my front door. And I've already had my view of the sun blocked from that four-story building that went up. It's hideous. And again, the renderings look a lot like the four oh nine building with terrible color schemes. So I'm worried about having to stare at brick walls and not being able to see all the, the sky. We can't see Nine Mile anymore and that will just add to that problem.
Thanks, Sarah. All right, we'll take our next.
Next person online is Sean Tobin.
Welcome, Sean.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. I was just wondering, just out of curiosity, if there had been any forecast for how many, how much property taxes would be foregone. In my understanding, the pilot in lieu, the payment in lieu of taxes means that there's going to be a mechanism where the property owner will be invoiced for certain fees and such, but they won't be paying property taxes directly. And I was wondering if anybody knew what the difference between them paying property taxes as normal versus what those fees will add up to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean, what was your address for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's three one four zero Minerva.
Thank you very much. I was just reminded to ask that. Thank you.
The next one, it just states iPhone.
Welcome. Oh, we can see you in the corner. You're still muted at this time. Erin, are you able to unmute her? I can see that she's talking.
Yeah, that's what I was just trying to see. I think I only have the capability to ask to unmute.
Okay, I think I got it.
You got it. Welcome.
Okay, my name is Jessie. We are at four two nine Vester, right next to Sarah. My concerns are exactly lined up with hers. We have children here that play all day long outside. Anywhere between five and ten kids running around. There's already so much traffic from the new restaurant down there. They just added a whole bunch of what are supposed to already be affordable housing right next to us. You know, we have kids that are doing homeschool for the foreseeable future. It can be another year, so we're going to have construction right in front of us. Kids trying to focus on school already. And I mean, I mean, that, that, that's pretty much it. All my concerns align with hers. The traffic that is going to be going in and out. I mean, why does you're putting a building here and you're bringing, you know, just, it's just traffic to the back here, to Vester Street. That's it, with kids running around and I mean, it's just. I think that there could be a better spot for this in Ferndale than what's already a home where we've already had, lived through, what, a year and a half of construction? That's it.
Thanks, Jessie.
Any hand raised at this time? We do have a call in, the last digits three, four, three. But other than that, I do not see anything.
I've seen people, and this is actually the first, Erin, this is the first planning commission meeting where I've had people using the message function. So I want to invite, if there's anyone who's sent me a message through the chat function, that's not something that's entered into the, into the public comment. I mean, this isn't a public hearing, but typically we don't use the chat function. So if there's anyone who sent me a comment on the chat that would like to reiterate that for the group, please feel free to.
It appears that perhaps Reggie Sutherland has a comment.
That's one of them. Perfect. I just, I wasn't sure if people were sending me a note or if they were sending me out because I thought it was part of the conversation. So I just wanted to make sure, because this hasn't happened before. Great, welcome Reggie.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm glad I could join in on this tonight because I think that that is a wonderful project that may be in the works. Unfortunately for the owners of the homes in the area, it may be, there may be some, some inconvenience for a short period of time. That property is going to be developed. I'm, I'm loving that it's going to be something that's going to be useful for people who are in need of housing that they can afford. Everyone can afford the four oh nine on nine. It's, it's just too expensive. It's out of the reach for some people, so. The fact that it's going to be affordable for people, that it's going to be a housing use instead of maybe an office building or something like that, I think that's a good thing. If we can work out the kinks with the park and, you know, hopefully work with the neighbors who have issues about the construction, the times and things like that, I think this will be a wonderful project.
Reggie, would you state your address for the record, please?
Nine Mile.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think we got cut off. Sorry.
East Nine Mile, five hundred East Nine Mile.
Thank you. All right, any other comments this evening?
We do have another hand raised from a previous
Sure.
From someone who previously had a
I think I see Jessie.
Okay.
I forgot to ask, um, what, when you guys are talking about affordable, what, what is the actual price range that will be charged for these affordable apartments?
I will make sure that they give us that information. They talked about income levels, but they didn't talk about prices. Thanks.
Right, right. Because yeah, here, they, the one next to us, they said it was the same thing, affordable housing, and it's like outrageous to run it.
Thank you.
So thanks. I don't know how to mute it.
There we go. Okay. I'm just looking real quick here.
Yeah, I don't see anybody, I don't see any further hand raised or anything like that.
Great. All right, well, we've got, I know we've got Carl and James from Full Circle here, so I'll let you guys decide who wants to jump in on what, but before we go to questions and comments from the commission, I want to work through a couple of these questions, excuse me, and comments from our neighbors. So you had a couple of comments about, about the facade, about really frankly, a national conversation about how all buildings are looking the same. You know, updates in building codes as well as construction costs are really driving a lot of monotony in building design. So I wonder if you guys would talk a little bit about the design. You know, what you sort of feel makes it, makes it special or perhaps any other, any other responses you want to, to add to the comments from the public about design.
Thanks. I'll actually let the architect respond to this one.
Thanks, Carl.
You know, I take your point, Mike, that, you know, I think we could continue to kind of develop some interest. We, we are kind of building off of Ferndale's requirements on materiality and, you know, trying to play with proportion and, and make sure that the building still feels modern and not the sort of senior building that you see off the highway. Do you have, I, I don't know if it's possible to, to talk back and forth, Mr. Baker, but, you know, I, I guess I'd, I'd like to understand what kind of changes people are interested in. Is it color? Is it you know, other materials? Would we be talking about metal or, or something sort of out of the box? I, I guess I, I'd be curious to have a little more detail on that because we think we are building good, durable, modern, but, you know, using some materials that are also seen in the neighborhood. So we're, we're doing our best, but we'd, we'd like to hear maybe a little more detail on that if that's the way the meeting can, can work. I don't know how comment works.
Sure, Jack. And for the clerk, that was Jack Schroder from the, from the development team. And I'm sure, just knowing my planning commission, I think we're going to have a few other questions and comments about design and, and citing. So probably the, the easiest way to do this is So probably the, the easiest way to do this is just put a pin in that one. And we'll make sure that we come back around, and then if there are any unanswered questions about design, we'll grab them. There was also, oh, Mike also had a question, and this might be a CHN question, about who's managing the building and supportive services in particular, and their familiarity with services that do specifically cater to the LGBTQ community? Whoever, you want to take that one, Carl?
Yeah, I'll take this question, and I think it's a, it's a really important one. So the property will be professionally managed by a company called Piper. Full Circle is the long-term owner, so after we develop it, it's not like we walk away. We care about the long-term outcomes there. So we work in a kind of a blended management role, so we work as the owner with property management staff and also supportive services staff. In terms of LGBTQ specificity, housing of this type is relatively new. There's a handful of projects that serve seniors. We're going to be one of the first to serve LGBTQ youth in the city of Detroit with the Ruth Ellis Project that's currently under construction. And to get up to speed on that, we're learning a lot. You know, we first sort of were looking at what are the critical gaps that created this problem in the first place? What are examples of both informal and formal housing occurring nationally that can inform kind of the development model? And then what are both national and local groups doing to serve this population? And how can we bring together the right team to be able to do it correctly? So at this project, we're taking a lot of the experience that we've learned through the Ruth Ellis Project, combining it with some of local expertise, so MCCD, affirmations, and Sage, with the supportive service expertise of Community Housing Network. And then it's really on us to create a series of expectations for the management company to understand what it means to address people with proper pronouns, to know where folks are coming from, to know why older adults, you know, are, are, are experiencing the circumstances that they are, that they're experiencing health problems sooner than their straight counterparts, things like that. Establishing house rules to make sure that there's a zero tolerance policy for folks to understand that there's respectability around this as well. So all of that kind of comes together to inform what we think is a coherent housing model. Because remember, we're, we're saying that we're creating housing for LGBTQ individuals. We need to make sure that it serves them well, or they're going to choose not to live here.
Thanks, Carl. If there's anyone on the call who wants to follow up more on this topic as you kind of build this network of service providers and advisors, who should they reach out to? How, how would they get in touch? Sorry, if there was anyone on this call who wanted to continue this conversation, perhaps as a community partner?
Yeah, I mean, probably me first because, you know, we have a, a coalition of folks now that we sort of distribute information to. So depending on the specificity of the question, I could put it out to the entire group to get probably the best response back.
Great, and you're on the Full Circle website or?
Yeah, and I can, I can provide the contact to Erin to make sure that, I, I believe there's going to be a project page that goes up. I would be happy to have my email listed to, to get people, you know, responsive questions.
Thank you.
I, I can do that.
Thank you. All right, so we've got questions about parking and circulation. The, the parking information that was presented from your other projects around the, around the country almost, it almost sounds too good to be true. We're Detroiters, we love cars, and in Ferndale, you know, as hard as we try to be transit oriented, this is always one of the things that keeps, keeps planning commissioners up at night, I can tell you that. But the, I wonder if, if you can talk a little bit more about, you know, maybe some of your developments in inner ring suburbs or in areas that aren't, you know, not that you're giving, you know, examples from San Francisco or Portland, but, you know, like we're not places that are, we're not a place that's super well-served by transit, although this is probably one of the best spots in the city in terms of transit service. So can you speak to these questions around, around parking? Around, you know, perhaps how you would respond if you found that your residents needed significantly more parking? What's your backup plan?
Sure, so I, I think we are presenting what we think is an appropriate amount of parking for the intended use. I think, you know, similar to when we look to the market in terms of how big do the units need to be? What types of amenities does the market have? You know, we're also thinking about the target population and what their needs are going to be and comparing it with similar property types. We won't do development that doesn't have good transit access because we know the people that we serve oftentimes don't have cars, and the only way that they can get to the things that they need is through transit. We think this site is, is, is sort of excellent for that, both in terms of walkability and being able to work with SMART around kind of increasing access. In terms of circulation, I think the architect has been really intentional about splitting the parking so that it's not just sort of one lot all coming off of Vester, but two, to hopefully reduce the demand. I think we've also taken a look at some of the other apartment buildings that are located on that street to see how they are doing it and trying to take cues so that we're not introducing something new. In terms of where do we anticipate there possibly being an increased demand for parking? It's with the use of the community meeting hub. So if we're having events that are going to draw people beyond just the tenants of the building, that probably would exceed the, you know, the parking lot capacity. And, you know, one of the ideas that came out of the previous meeting with Plan Commission was there's a lot of large surface lots immediately adjacent to it that have sort of an interesting daytime, nighttime differential in terms of use. So James is right now talking with a, a number of them around getting shared use agreements so that we would have that in place to be able to handle overflow parking. I don't know if this also came across in the design, so in addition to, to putting in the, a new bus stop with SMART, there's also a lot of bicycle parking, so there's a bike room, and then there's also several bike racks. Because again, you know, in conversations with city staffers, we're trying to take cues from not just where Ferndale is today, but also where Ferndale is going to be. And I think, thinking about multimodal transportation opportunities and doing truly transit-oriented development is really a guiding principle for what we're trying to do here.
Thanks, Carl. I'm sure we're going to come back to the, the circulation conversation, but let's take, there were, there were two specific questions that weren't about the site, I'm sorry, about the site plan. One was related to the pilot, which actually, I don't know if we have anyone here who can speak to that tonight. Erin, is that something left, left for the full application process when, when Jordan might be on the call?
Jordan is actually on the call, but I thought that perhaps the applicant could speak to that first, and then if we need any supplemental support with that, we can take it on as a city too.
Sure, yeah, tax incentives and, and pilots aren't necessarily something that Planning Commission considers as part of a site plan or a PUD review process in terms of approving those things. But Jordan, if you want to jump in about how this may impact whether it's a PUD agreement or something that goes to, to council, you're welcome to.
Yeah, absolutely, I totally could. I'll, I'll go ahead and I'll fill the void unless, Carl, if your team, do, do you have anything you want to open it up with? Because I certainly can go into that. I do, I do oversee the incentive process on the city side.
Just to provide a quick update about where we're at. So we've reached out to the Oakland County Assessor to get a better handle on, Sean, to answer your question, kind of what the tax analysis would be. Typically, affordable housing developments in the state of Michigan have some pilot form, though there's a percentage that varies in that calculation. But the assessors typically evaluate on an income approach for taxes. And what we've typically found, I used to work for another developer in, in Michigan, but what we typically found is about a 10% pilot actually comes out pretty close to the normal property taxes the property would pay based off an income approach. We're requesting about a 50% reduction of that as part of our pilot agreement with the city, which is pretty close to actually what the existing use of the flower shop is paying.
Thanks, James. Is there anything you wanted to add on that, Jordan, or does that?
Only for context, in, in terms of how the process works, we require anyone seeking any kind of incentive from the city to get an approval from the Planning Commission on their concept first. We'd like to know what we're incentivizing. So a lot of that, you know, any, any of the kind of conditions, while, you know, obviously the Planning Commission, you all know, you know, your, your PUD scope and the checklist and all those different things. If there are specific conditions, as with, you know, other PUDs in the past, things that you want captured in the development agreement and you want carried forward to council, we will certainly take heed of those in terms of, you know, any, any kind of community concerns that are there. But that would typically come at the city council level after, at least they would have to get a PUD approval from you before we would allow them to formally apply.
Thanks, Jordan. All right. The last other, coming back to circulation and facade, I want to make sure we don't miss the question about price range. So you guys talked about AMI. What does that translate to in terms of price ranges for different groups?
Yeah, so I just pulled this up. One bedrooms have a rental range of like $440 to $883, and two bedrooms are a range between $530 and $1,100. So Reggie, your, your comments earlier, our rental rates are quite a bit below the 409 on nine project.
Thanks, James. All right. Okay, I've got notes about circulation and aesthetics to make sure that we come back to. But who would like on the Planning Commission to kick this off with questions or comments? I can't see, some of my commissioners are on the next screen, so I'm sorry, you can just go ahead and unmute yourself if I can't see you. I can talk circulation if we want to start there. Thinking about that, the driveway on Vester versus, let's say, it opening up onto Paxton. How, how was that circulation pattern assessed? You know, so why was the decision made to put the driveway on Vester? Pulling the, pulling the building forward to Nine Mile so that it's not crowding the houses on Vester? I'm inferring that that was part of the choice for keeping the green space along Vester so that you're not kind of, you know, looming over those houses. But I wonder if someone would talk about the site circulation and where the driveways are, Mike?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, to chime in for that. So first of all, this is a pretty small lot for a project of this size, but for affordable housing developments, you do kind of have to hit a certain scale in terms of number of units to make management and construction efficiencies. So when we looked at, at weighing the kind of green space that you were just talking about, it's really to serve as buffer and also increase open space for the lot, which is, and we know, important to the city of Ferndale. We could certainly look at the option of moving the driveway, but it'll likely come at a sacrificing open space, so it's hard to balance. We do at some point have to make a priority somewhere. And just one note I wanted to clarify, we actually have 33 parking spots. It's that lot of eight plus 25, at that 25 that was mentioned earlier. So if we look at number of residents in terms of number of parking spots, that's right around 50%, 33 spots for 65 tenants.
James, will you talk as well about how many staff you expect to have on site? I remember this coming up when you guys were with us in October, and I was, it was a low number, I remember. This isn't like an American house where you've got, you know, sort of like a full kitchen and other things, right?
Yeah, there'll be a full-time property manager and a full-time case manager, so two.
Thank you, so not a ton of staff parking in those spots?
No.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission on parking and circulation at this time?
Through, through the chair.
Councilman Pollock?
Yes. So Jordan Torri and I had a conversation earlier this week, and, and I had asked him for some numbers regarding parking for like Autumn House and Withington, Withington House with relationship to the number of units, residents, and the amount of parking available for those two facilities. Because my understanding is this new development is going to be along the same lines in regards to the income levels of the residents that will be living here. And so in my mind, you have Autumn House, which doesn't have a lot of parking, and they don't seem to have an issue with parking. So Erin, do you happen to have those numbers?
I do.
Okay.
So for Autumn House, that had, I don't have a number of residents, I have a number of units. So Autumn House has 55 units and 14 parking spaces.
Okay.
Withington House has 68 units and they have 34 parking spaces.
Okay, so half, they have.
Yeah.
A half, a half parking space for, for each unit, okay. So that's, that's, that's the information that I, I wanted, so thank you, I appreciate you pulling that and making that public.
Thanks, Councilman. Chris, your showalter?
Yeah, and kind of, and so it sounds like the parking issue, I mean, I, I mean, I, I do worry about the parking spots and the lack of parking, but if the shared parking agreements can materialize, then, then I'd feel a lot more comfortable looking at this. And, yeah, and I also do have, I can see how having 25 parking spaces dump into Vester could be an issue for some of the neighbors. And getting it over to Paxton would, I think, would, would help relieve some of the heartburn there. Maybe redesign of where that parking lot lies on that site may help out.
Thanks, Commissioner Schwalter? Commissioner Zar? Oh, no, okay, sorry.
Sorry, you're scratching my nose.
It's like an auction, dude, you mean to bid on that? Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not used to the chat function actually being functional in public meetings. Erin or, or Jordan in the City Clerk's office, how should I be?
Yeah.
Acting with us?
Yeah, I, I apologize, we, we don't use the chat function in this, and I, I think it probably just needs to be turned off on, on the backend. We did have some folks raising their hands, but at this time, it's over to Commissioner questions, so just as an FYI, we do have a queue of folks that are, that do have their hands raised.
Okay, oh, got it, all right. All right. Okay, if we've got additional questions and comments for the public, we can come back to those, and then we'll wrap it up with the commission so that we can give some clear direction to our applicants.
Okay, so the first person to have their hand raised is Mike Flores.
Welcome, Mike.
Hello, guys. So I know, so again, thank you, Commissioner Baker. I know this is unconventional for us to re-engage the audience, but just to follow up with what Jack had said earlier, the invitation to provide some feedback, you know, I would just invite you to invite comments from the community. I mean, my voice is only one voiced, and we have a very diverse, we have very diverse voices in our, in our city. So personally, Mike Flores speaking, is that with all these new modern buildings that are coming up, is that we're losing the uniqueness of what makes Ferndale Ferndale. And I think that the sentiment with many of us who, I've been in Ferndale since 2003, is that we're becoming like any other community in Metro Detroit, and we're losing some of our uniqueness because of these influx of new buildings that kind of look the same. Especially when we're so close to our border community, Royal Log, that is doing something similar very aggressively, and just going down Main Street, all their buildings basically look the same. And that's one, so again, this is just my voice, and I invite you and the rest of your team to really get a. and I invite you and the rest of your team to really get additional, um, input from other community members. So that was just my, uh, feedback. And then in regards to, um, Carl's, um, comment about making sure that they invite, um, qualified, um, people to, 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 to serve, um, the community, the community, the community members that are targeting. Um, just one thing that I, I do want to make sure is that with lessons learned from the Ruth Ellis Center, is that we truly do implement those at, um, at, at this proposed, um, facility just because of the impact of trauma, especially for older adults. Um, obviously they've been victimized, um, potentially victimized. Um, and that constant traumatization, especially around housing, is extremely, extremely, um, uh, important that we avoid, um, especially for, for, for a community that has been targeted, targeted and ostracized and, you know, any other adjective that you want to use, um, trauma is so important. So with, as a follow-up, do you have other examples in the Chicago area that you're doing that target the LGBT community? And if so, can you speak a little bit more about that? Because I think that that may help us, um, truly understand your level of expertise targeting the LGBT community. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Carl, if there's anything you want to add to that one, then we can kind of wrap up that topic and then we'll see. I think we've probably got a couple more follow-on questions, uh, from the public.
Sure, so we actually, we're very fortunate to have an existing project here. It's sort of been incredibly influential as we were thinking about this project for Ferndale. So there's a project here in Chicago called the Town Hall, which is a senior LGBTQ facility in the Boys Town neighborhood, um, which we toured with members of the Ferndale community so that they could ask questions about how that development was working, what the services team, what were lessons learned having gone through this process? In terms of, has Full Circle developed LGBTQ housing before? No, um, the Ruth Ellis Project will be our first development that serves this project exclusively. This will likely be our second. And then we're also working with a coalition of groups in the city of Chicago around a new development that's going to be a combination of senior housing paired with, um, youth permanent supportive housing, both serving LGBTQ, um, for, on the south side of the city.
Thanks, Carl.
Yep.
All right. Uh, who else is next, Erin?
The next person in line is Todd Bates.
Welcome, Todd.
Thank you. I appreciate you giving me a second chance to speak. And the question I had posted in chat, and I guess this is for the Ferndale Planning Commission, what are the planning requirements for, uh, parking as it relates to residential dwellings? And if this is, this development is less than that, are you planning on giving exceptions to the planning requirements for this property?
Thanks, Todd. The, um, Erin may be a better one to answer this or correct me if I'm wrong. Um, but to answer the last part first, uh, the planning commission does have discretion to grant, uh, waivers to our parking requirements if certain criteria are met, um, which typically has to do with building location in relation to, uh, transit and other transportation amenities. Erin, what is, what's the section of the zoning code, um, that deals with access management parking?
Yeah, so for residential, um, uses, uh, so there's multifamily dwellings. That's one and a half per unit plus one for every 10 dwelling, plus one per each, 10 dwellings for guest parking. Um, there's also senior housing, which is one per dwelling unit. So I think in, in this instance, since it is catered towards, um, senior living, I think that the senior living dwelling unit would be more appropriate. So that's one per unit. Development team, if that's different than what you were thinking, please chime in. Um, but that was the interpretation that I had.
Thanks, Erin. All right, and I would.
Um, what you're saying is that this property is considering being approved with less than half of the required parking. Thank you.
So there's no action this evening and we don't have a formal request in front of us? Um, but based on what they've shared, based on what they've shared this evening, uh, we would anticipate that they'd be asking for some type of waiver. Yeah, go ahead, Jack.
Sorry, just the counts are, it's 53 units and there's 33 parking spaces. I, I just want to make that very clear.
All right, thank you. But again, there's no, there's no formal proposal or waiver request in front of us at this time. Um, Erin, what would be the, you know, I'll, I'll come back to that. Um, who's the, do we have any other hands raised?
Yep, the other one that we have is Sarah.
Great. Welcome, Sarah. Welcome back. I see you. There you are.
Yes, um, I was just, uh, still concerned about the parking and the traffic. I understand, I looked at the grid that they had showed earlier and three of their, uh, current buildings that they compared this building to were located in Chicago, which has a robust public transit. And although we are close to a smart bus stop and all that, um, the fact of the matter is in Michigan, in the winter, in this area, people do have cars. I also have a lot of friends in the LGBTQ, um, community and often even with the low-income housing in a one-bedroom, they're not going to live alone. There'd be two, two adults in a place. So that will increase the number of bodies in the building, which I'm really concerned about that parking and the traffic with the children. Um, I'm wondering if, if this project moves ahead, if they can actually, um, contact some of, some of us who actually own the properties adjacent to this property to help, um, have input. I would love to not have animosity towards a building or its tenants when it shows up um, because of what it's doing to my neighborhood. And, um, if they included those of us who actually own the adjacent properties in the plans moving forward, I think that would help with that a lot. Um, like I said, they're making plans from Chicago. They don't live here. They don't see how, how our neighborhood works. And to actually have input from those of us who live here and experience it on a daily basis, I think that would behoove everyone.
Thanks, Sarah. Yep, we've had a few, um, projects lately that have only come out better because they've engaged their neighbors upfront. Um, so, an excellent point. The, oh, I'm sorry.
Today, I don't know if there's a way for us to get in touch with them or for them to get in touch with the people that own the properties around. I, I'm not sure how, how to make that work, but I'd like to.
Got it. Thanks, Sarah. I think that there's probably a number of ways to accomplish that, um, both through the city and just by, you know, frankly, physically reaching out to people, which is, you know, harder, of course, now, um, but it's, you know, doesn't mean they can't send a letter, um, leave a flyer, um, share contact information, right? So Carl, you were like nodding your head vigorously. Was there something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I, I agree completely, Sarah. Um, and I think in terms of, one of the things that we've been hamstrung the most this year due to COVID is, is a normal community outreach process. Our plan for the next two months is to host a series of virtual question and answer sessions. So rather than it being kind of a one-sided presentation, it's hopefully a smaller group so that folks have the opportunity to ask questions and we can talk through things. Um, and I think hopefully that'll, that'll get at, getting some of the specific information because obviously folks that live on the street behind us have concerns that are different from folks that live farther away. And I think we want to make time to hear all of them and be able to address how we're not just kind of ignoring it and trying to, to compromise so that it's a development that the community can be proud of.
Thanks, Carl. That's very helpful. All right, Erin, any other hands raised at this time?
Yes, we have one more hand raised and I believe that's Jesse.
All right. Oh, I see you. Hi, Jesse.
Hi, um, I, I really want to say that everything that Sarah is saying is a lot of the same feelings of everybody on Vester Street that we've talked to. So I mean, when she speaks, she's kind of speaking for a lot of us, especially us parents that, you know, have children running around and stuff. Um, I, my last question, well, it's two questions, is what is the timeframe of when this whole thing would kind of be getting started? And then is this, I heard the word being proposed. I don't know if this is, I guess I didn't hear if it has been proposed or if it has been approved yet, or if this is just, you know, the actual proposal happening now. That's it.
Got it. Thanks, Jesse. All right, uh, one question for the developer about construction timeframe. So things have been under construction near here for a little over a year now. Um, you anticipate that's about a similar timeframe or what's your? How long would you guys be under construction?
Sure, so, um, not to get too far in the weeds, we have a, the first step of getting funding for the project is a competitive application that's due in February of 2021. We probably won't hear back about whether we receive that funding or not until the summer. Um, the project then will have a very long closing process that probably won't complete until maybe late spring or early summer of 2022.
He understood my question.
And then it would be a 12 to 13 month construction period. So it would be opening in the summer or fall of 2023.
Got it. Thanks, Carl.
Yep.
And then talking about next steps in this process, that was something I was going to come back to Erin for, um, because there are a few steps. Uh, this, the, that we found that more discussion about, um, sort of atypical developments, like planned unit developments, right? These, these are things that fall a little bit outside of the typical zoning box, if you will. Uh, these need more discussion, um, and more, uh, input from the community. So we have some of these preliminary, um, discussion items that don't have any action like tonight, but action would potentially be coming soon, right, Erin?
Yeah, so the next, next step, um, for the development team would to be, uh, submit a formal application. So that is a formal application with a site plan, full site plan, um, that's reviewed by our engineers, our police, our fire, our building department, us and our, um, CED department to make sure it's compliant with all of the regulations we have in our zoning ordinance. Um, also with the PUD, there is a development agreement that is associated with that. Um, and, um, that's also part of the review process. So that would all have to be formally submitted and then that is reviewed and, um, in front of the planning commission. And at that point too, that is a public hearing, um, for that development. And, um, if they were to move forward after that, the next step for approvals is, uh, city council. So city council has the final approval for these types of developments. So first it would be they form, give us a formal submission. We review it. It's then goes in front of planning commission for a public hearing. They review it. If it moves on from planning commission to city council, it has another, um, public hearing at city council and that's the final decision point.
Through the chair. Through the chair. Erin, just, just for, uh, clair, this is Councilman Polica. Just for clarity though, um, you mentioned two, um, you know, the review by, by the planning commission and then it goes to council for, for review and vote. But those don't always happen to be, those don't always happen as just two meetings. In, in many instances, it comes back to the planning commission a couple of times before it actually, um, gets approved.
It depends on the project. Um, you know, as Chair Baker had mentioned, the reason why we, uh, included this preliminary PUD discussion as part of the process for PUDs is to provide ample amount of time for discussion and review before any formal decisions are made. So it, it really depends on the project. Um, but the, as far as the process goes, um, we have these preliminary PUD discussions. We encourage the development team to do their own community engagement. We have the formal public hearing in front of the planning commission and then the formal public hearing in front of city council. That's the, that's the bare votes process that we're legally required to do.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
And in terms of notice, um, for the public hearings, neighbors, uh, within a thousand feet will be mailed, uh, notice of the public hearing. Um, typically when, oh, go ahead.
We actually typically do 500 feet, but if a thousand feet is, uh, preferred and, um, and that's the, that's a preference, we can have it a thousand feet.
Oh, I thought this was part of the enhanced notice.
Uh, it's 500 feet.
Oh, 500 feet is the enhanced notice. Oh, okay, got it. All right. Well then, 500 feet, but also, um, typically when we're in council chambers doing this, um, we have people who want to stay informed about something, sign in on the sign-in sheet and share their email address. Um, I just thought of something, of a way to use the chat function since it's on tonight. Um, Erin, would it be appropriate if someone wanted to, um, make sure that they got a notice of the next public hearing for them to enter their email address in the chat function? Or maybe you enter your email address there and they can contact you? What, how would you suggest? I think this is the first, this is the first big Zoom project we've done like this.
Sure, yeah, I, I think that's a really good point. I will, I will submit, I'll, I'll put my, um, contact information in the chat so folks aren't sharing it widely with the group just for protection and privacy. Um, and then as, I think it was Carl that mentioned it too, typically as part of these projects, you know, something that the city takes on too is we, we do what, what's called a project page for this. And that's where you can find the up-to-date information. Um, that's, you know, coming soon is, it was planned after this meeting to make sure we had all the up-to-date information following this meeting to, um, go live with that. And there will be another opportunity there for you to, um, add comment and get in contact with, uh, city staff and then we can, um, uh, get in contact with the development team as well. So let me, um, let me put my email address into the chat and, um, I'll also put my direct line, uh, at the office. Um, and then you guys can reach me then.
That's perfect. Thank you. Um, all right. Any final questions or comments from the planning commission on this item tonight?
Yes, um, so I want to, uh, this is Matt Scholter.
Commissioner Scholter? Thank you.
Yep, Scholter. Um, I just wanted to kind of just reinforce, uh, the, the community outreach is good. It really goes a long way, at least to me on the commission, when I hear that, uh, that there has been, uh, there's been a lot of outreach and that the, uh, and the developers trying to be a good neighbor and that, that really does go a long way and seeing evidence of that uh, is always really, makes the vote go a little bit easier. Um, then also, uh, one final thing, I, I know I brought up shared parking, but since this is primarily going to be a, um, senior living facility, I would be hesitant to choose shared parking agreements with people that might be maybe across the busy Nine Mile, possibly. Uh, I would just be careful about which properties you go with a shared parking agreement, possibly.
For special events or for resident parking, Matt?
Uh, just for the overflow parking. Uh, i- i- if, if we do approve a project that's 20 units short and they, we realize that we, they actually need those 20 units and the unit, your residents need somewhere to park without clogging up Vester and the adjacent properties, I don't really want, I think it would be doing the community a disservice to have elderly people trying to cross Nine Mile.
All right. Other final questions or comments from the planning commission at this time?
Yeah, through the chair, this is Ian Williamson. Um, I, I wanted to comment on some of the statements that we've heard about, uh, the architecture and the questions about, uh, the uniqueness of the architecture and point out that, uh, there was some tension here between the idea of having unique architecture for a building and also having that building be affordable housing. Construction costs have skyrocketed over the last, uh, five years or so within this country. And, uh, I, I can say that as a, uh, longtime Ferndale resident and commissioner, I, I feel more strongly about the affordability component, particularly if we can move the, uh, rental rates on an affordable building like this closer to the lower end of the prices that were cited as opposed to the higher end, which, uh, you know, when you get up into the higher end of some of the prices we were talking about, they're not really all that affordable. Uh, so that to me is, is more important than having the architecture be particularly unique is that this actually be maintained as an affordable project. When it comes to the parking issue, I, I'm a Wilson Park resident. I've lived in Wilson Park for the past 15 years. Uh, lived very close to, uh, Autumn House for much of that period. And I, I can say that it was a very, very rare day that I saw the parking lot at Autumn House fall, uh, except maybe on election days. Uh, the reality is, is that when you have residents that are living in affordable units, one of the reasons these residents are living in affordable units is because they can't afford things like maintaining an automobile or paying insurance. I think that y- you're going to tend to have, uh, fewer people that actually own cars that are going to be living in a building like this. So I'm less concerned about the parking for a proposal like this than I would be about a proposal for a general run-of-the-mill, standard-priced, uh, apartment complex. Uh, I, I have, uh, I appreciate what the developers are proposing to do here. We've seen a lot of developments in Ferndale over the last five to seven years that has ended up skewing heavily towards. five to seven years that has ended up skewing heavily towards luxury residential development. Uh, I, I really would like to see some projects balance that out more so. So I, to the developers, I'm appreciative that you're proposing this project in Ferndale. Thanks.
Thanks Commissioner Williamson. Commissioner Hosky?
Yeah, I was just going to um, thank the development team for um, integrating some of the feedback from previous conversations, particularly around um, the first floor activation and, and really uh, developing a project that um, sorry, my dog is snoring on my lap really loud, I just realized. Um, that, that activates nine mile in a way that, that, you know, I, I live a block from here um, and, and activates nine mile in a way that it's, it's used today. So I, I appreciate um, the changes that were made for this iteration and look forward to future iterations as you continue to work with the community.
Thanks Commissioner Hosky. I wasn't sure if it was the dog or the baby snoring.
It's the dog.
All right, um, other final comments and questions from the commission at this time?
Uh, through the chair, this is Councilwoman Polica.
Hey Councilman. And I saw you two, Commissioner Azar, I'll get you next.
I um, uh, I would encourage the developers to reach out to residents uh, uh, further than 500 feet. I think if you reached out to a thousand feet, um, uh, I, I think that would be a, a much better um, representation of the neighborhood. Uh, because you have a lot of businesses in those areas and if you go 500 feet, I mean, you're, you're, you're basically hitting a bunch of businesses and, and not very many residents. Um, so I would just encourage you to go the thousand feet for that reason.
Thanks Councilman.
Thank you.
Commissioner Azar?
Hi, thanks. Um, I, I'd like to also echo that I think it's, it's um, a worthwhile development and um, the intent to make it affordable is huge. And also, um, I can appreciate from the architectural sense that, that um, they've tried to break up the facade at least to indicate some different materials, um, done some different things with the windows. Um, but sometimes on a cloudy day, it all looks like boxes. So um, really appreciate that the first floor is activated and they've looked at different um, details like the um, little bit of uh, canopy or a change of color and that kind of thing, so that breaks the building up a little more. Um, just like to challenge them a little bit further, um, see if, if they can still use these affordable elements and um, uh, make them a little less because um, really flat facades and flat planes really just don't have the um, the interest. And I, I, I'm thinking like if we did one after the other, after the other, because so now we've got a big development. We do have some um, uh, variety in the facade, so it steps back and so on. Um, this more affordable, I don't want it to look cheap, I don't think it does look cheap, but I, I don't think that should be a um, an excuse. Sorry for that word. But um, you're almost there. Um, please keep your uh, creative hat on. And um, I, I do appreciate that, um, there's an attempt at that so far, so, and, and I think it'd be a great addition, so thank you.
Thanks Commissioner Azar. All right, other planning commissioners? See Councilwoman Polica is unmuted?
Oh, nope, sorry, I'm just never remuted.
Got it. All right. This is, this is the development that so many people have been, have been asking for and waiting for in our community. I've, I've heard it uh, over the years in so many ways, um, and, and something that is such a point of pride for our community, um, that we really are the, the, the center of the LGBTQ community. And not just in Michigan, but like in Midwest, you know, we are, uh, we're, we're really the, the, the heart of um, of this very special community that has chosen to embrace Ferndale. Um, so ways that Ferndale can, can help our residents stay here longer. Um, aging in places is so difficult and we're looking at really this, this, this generational tsunami um, that are all going to need new housing solutions, whether it's retrofitting or um, you know, moving, but hopefully staying nearby in the place that they love, near the people that they love, um, and they're going to need it all at once. So, um, you know, this is a drop in the bucket in the number of, of units for senior housing, um, that it is targeted senior housing. Um, to respond to the needs of, of Ferndale, um, is, I mean, I, thanks for not putting this in Levonia. I mean, like, I, I don't know what else to say other than, you know, thanks for considering Ferndale for something like this. The, the site is in some ways, I think extremely well suited to this. Um, and in other ways, there's a lot of development going on in this little corner right now. Um, because it is, you know, it's, it's right on nine mile, it's, it's right on the, the bus line, the bike lane. It is currently more affordable than other places in the city because you're, you know, you're, you're on the east side that is uh, not as developed yet. Um, has some older buildings that are still waiting to be redeveloped, so. Anything, and I realize there's always a trade off, right? Um, you know, a trade off of, of green space for site circulation and access is perhaps one that should be explored. Um, the, the, you may or may not be aware that there's another large development um, that may or may not be happening within two blocks of this, you know, just at the other end at Vester and the train tracks in addition to the residences that went in next door. So there's about to be a lot of conversation and potential pressure on this neighborhood in terms of, of change, of traffic, um, of um, you just sort of evolution into something denser and more transit oriented. So a way to, to ease into that rather than crash into it. Um, I think is, is what we're hearing from, from our neighbors, that they, they love this place um, and they want to make sure that everything fits in together as best as possible. So, um, I think we are going to wrap this up. I will look at, at Erin and at Carl and Jack. Is there, are there any questions that you guys had for the planning commission that we haven't talked about tonight? Was there any specific direction you were looking for that we haven't shared? Okay.
Oh, Kate, you just muted.
I did it backwards, thank you. I was saying thank you so much. Uh, we will move on now. Um, it's, it sounds like the goal is to see you guys again in January probably, um, given some of the notice requirements, but please everyone take down Erin's contact information. Uh, we want to make sure that people are back here for the next conversation because that will likely be a public hearing that does have some, some action attached to it, okay? Whether that's late December or early January, I'm, I'm not sure at this point because there are public notice requirements that go with that.
And I would like to mention just as a quick note again, uh, with projects such as these, we do have a project page on the Ferndale um, MI.gov website. Um, it's on the, the front page, you can find um, projects, it's actually what it's called. And um, it's not up yet, but it will be uh, later this week.
Okay, there we go, unmuted. Okay, thanks. Uh, thank you to the full circle team, thank you to our neighbors on Vester and on Rosewood and on nine mile. Um, of course you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, um, but we are going to move on to our next item, number eight A. This is an administrative item. We have an update, um, this came up at our last meeting and I think it's just a good update um, in general about public notice requirements um, and community engagement. We have, um, as many departments in the city do, um, some certain thresholds that we are required to meet um, in terms of notice for different types of uh, planning and zoning actions. Um, and then some additional things that the city does on top of that, um, to do some greater and, and further community outreach. So I think Erin's going to outline for us what some of our statutory requirements are, uh, the things that we require in our zoning ordinance that we do. Um, what then some of the enhancements are that have been made to that. Um, and then we can talk about a couple of suggestions that is like still here, that Mike brought at the last meeting there. I see you, you moved. Um, oh my God, everyone went away. Whoa, I have one screen now. Um, uh, and things that we've seen done in other communities, um, and how um, you know, sort of uh, different pieces fit together whether to be hopefully additive. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So um, so there are a few things that we're required to notice as part of the um, open meetings act and public hearings. Public hearings have to be noticed at least 15 days prior to any scheduled meeting. Um, what type of notice uh, de- and the uh, reach of that notice depends on the type of item. So for example, uh, zoning ordinance amendment or anything related to ordinances is 15 days um, in publication of um, public newspapers as well as outside of city hall. Um, if it's a particular project, um, such as this, such we just, we just talked about a planned unit development, um, there is a radius requirement for that around that um, unit. So we would have to do the um, newspaper notice, notice outside of city hall and then in addition, do a mailing. For large projects such as these, we take on the 500 foot radius. Um, we have increased it in the past, for instance, when we did, we're discussing the DOT, the DOT had um, a, a great, a greater reach as far as a mailing. Um, so that's, that's, that's above and beyond about what we take on as the city because we think that that type of community agent is important. Um, but it is not necessarily required. Um, there are other things such as conditional rezonings that require notice and a public hearing. Um, really anything that would have a significant impact on zoning and planning. Um, similarly, we have public hearing notice requirements for our board of zoning appeals. So if there is anybody requesting a variance, um, same thing a- as, as a type of development, um, that is more site specific. And so you would have a mailing go out around, you know, a 300 foot radius of that project. You would have it in the newspaper and you would have it um, posted outside of city hall. Um, one of the things that I know that um, city council has done recently, especially in this digital time and everything, is to have Facebook events for council meetings. And um, although that is certainly something possible that we could do, we just want to make sure that we are sensitive to um, the intricacies of private development versus public development, right? So we have public development, which would be things like the DOT, and we have private development such as the um, somebody building a home or, you know, someone putting a new business in. And so we just have a very fine line for that and based on the information that I received through our communications department, um, we just need to make sure that we're sensitive in that respect. So for items that are on public property that deal with, you know, things that maybe like a zoning ordinance amendment, things that are um, very public and, you know, very critical to, let's say, government operations. That is something that we are, are open to as far as Facebook events. Um, but to have it for something for every single planning commission meeting, I don't know if this is, if that is necessarily appropriate. Open to having another discussion about that if, um, you know, I get feedback otherwise, but that's um, that's that item. And then there was another thing that was brought up regarding um, like a large signs to indicate at a, at a development or something like that. Or maybe if, if there was a parcel that was going through a rezoning, other communities have done that, um, and we even see that in Michigan. Um, based on the conversations I had with our city attorney, that is certainly possible, it's something that we can do. Um, the thing that we discussed was um, what would be the threshold for doing that? So um, in other communities, for example, they do it when there's a rezoning. Or if there's a really large development, um, there's something that's going to be impactful. And if that is something that the commission wishes to do, um, the council from our city attorney was that we set parameters around that and write that into our ordinance and code. Because in our zoning ordinance, um, we do specify clearly when public hearings are required, what type of notices are required and so on and so forth. So if we are going to add up uh, another um, item such as a large sign or anything like that, then um, the recommendation would be to codify it. Um, the other thing, the other couple of things that we do that we've started um, within the last three years, at least since I've been on staff, is we have what's called an enhanced notice policy for large developments or developments that um, exceed greater, I think, I believe it's greater than 50% of the um, height um, in the surrounding area. So that's really in regards to like casting shadow and density and that sort of thing. So we have this enhanced notice policy, um, where we ask the developer to send out a mailing to the surrounding area in advance of any um, meeting in front of planning commission as part of another um, community engagement effort. And then the last thing I will mention that we do as well is um, something I mentioned when we were discussing the PUD um, at the previous item was a project page. And so we have um, CED just takes it on and does that on the city website to put a project page together. Um, project pages are things that have large developments, maybe projects that have incentives associated with them. Um, significant planning efforts such as Ferndale Moves or um, you know, other efforts that we would have in regards to planning. And we thought that that was another way that people could get, you, stay up to date with um, some of these larger projects and get even more information. It's not perfect, um, but we know that it's something that is, has helped within the last few years as far as communication for those types of um, projects and efforts, so. Um, and then, you know, certainly if, if different projects warrant it, the city will take on community engagement. That's kind of above and not beyond and have additional community meetings, for example. Um, like next Wednesday, we have the community meeting for Ferndale Moves and Woodward, so. Um,
I think one, one piece that-
No, if anything else, don't miss anything.
You, you did, actually you missed what I think is a really big one. Um, and I think we take it for granted now, but uh, like eight or 10 years ago, that we certainly didn't and couldn't, um, is that all of our, all of our agendas, all of our packet materials, all of our recordings, all of our minutes are available online and archived online. Like that is, that's a huge difference and an improvement um, in terms of communication. Um, but again, we, you know, we kind of take it for granted now that that's, that's the way that the business is done, right? So I'm glad that the city does business in the way that business is done. You know, people think to look online uh, for things now. You don't come into the city hall and flip through a binder, which is how you used to look through, through drawings, right? Um, but that said, there are, um, I know as a part of our notice requirements, the reason that we still post things where they can be viewed in person is that not everyone's online and some people do need to take a look at something or make a request um, to see a hard copy of something. So um, I know that you do occasionally still get those requests, um, so that people can come in and, and review something that's going to be in the packet. So um, yeah, just the, the, the amount, the, the amount of information, the, the depth and quality of information that's just part of the typical agenda packet process, um, I think is something we shouldn't forget.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, I did it again. Commissioner Foster?
Yeah. Thanks. Um, I just have a question. Um, which publication newspaper do we use to publicize?
Yeah, what's our paper record? It's the Tribune, isn't it?
That's a very good question. Yeah, we have, we, I think there's like three or four we actually sent to.
Oh, okay.
So there's a, we do a Legals Classified that goes to the Oakland Press, McCombe Daily, Morning Sun, Royal Tribune, News Herald, uh, Press and Guide and Voice News. So that's the organization that we go through for our classifieds.
Thanks, that sounds sufficient. Um, certainly, um, I often see Berkeley notices in the Woodward Talk and I was just wondering if we could, you could possibly take it back to our communications team or whoever that might be to talk about the possibility of that. I think, I mean, as a free weekly newspaper, I think that's the most commonly seen paper in Ferndale. So I'd, I'd like to consider placing notices in there if we can. I know there's a cost to all this. Um, personally, my preference would, that would be a priority just since I know that everyone in Ferndale does get the Woodward Talk um, for free. Thank you.
I think that's a great point, um, finding something that would be um, either reaching a new audience or, you know, adding something, something new to the process. Um, I, I, I think I, I guess maybe I should back up. I'm, I'm sensitive to the fact that our, our community development team, our clerk's office, you know, sort of all of our city staff um, have a lot of demands on their time. So um, as we, as we think about this, um, we, we often, you know, think that more is better and we want to add and add and add. Um, but if we can be focused in our additions, um, to make sure that we're getting the word out to perhaps a community that's not hearing the word, right? So if we've got a lot of stuff online, is there something we should be doing that's not online or, you know, vice versa? So thanks, Michelle. I saw Commissioner Showalter unmute a minute ago. No?
Oh, I was just going to say, yeah, uh, thumbs up for the Woodward Doc. Um, that's pretty much the only paper I read too. Um, because it's free. And I, I know a few people who feel that way as well.
Thanks. Other commissioners? Thanks. Other commissioners? Alright, so Mike, oh, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, Mike is the one who, who brought the question to us in the first place, so. I wanted to see if there's anything that he wanted to add or clarify, um, you know, as sort of we, as we try to balance. Communication and staff workload and making sure that we're maybe adding new communication channels that reach new audiences as opposed to. Layering or shuffling.
Yeah, for sure. Now, first of all, thank you so much for definitely taking that feedback and Erin doing the research and working with the internal city teams to um. To see where we're at and what we could do and, and also benchmark and Commissioner Baker and the rest of the commissioners for taking this on, this topic on again. So again, I think the purpose of bringing this up was to just make sure that when impacts, when projects impact the community. That there's equitable, equitable opportunities for people to have an input um, on, on, on the project. And address any concerns that they may have on the potential impact. So I was, I'm a digital person. I follow Facebook. I'm on the, the Ferndale webpages. I've, but I'm, I also have a, I'm mostly very interested in this, in, in some of these topics, right? Well, I think kind of the general public, um, by the time they see it, it's late. It's too late to have an impact. It's too late to. Um, be able to express their concerns because they didn't, they weren't at all the right meetings, like the planning commission meetings. To be able to properly express um, their concerns. They're doing it at city council when city council is about to vote, uh, which is already too late. So I think that um, not only having the information available, not on, not only, I apologize, I'm still in the office. Not only having the information available um, online um, for people who are, are, are comfortable with technology. But also having it physically available, not only in city hall, which is traditionally now obviously been the safest places for all members of our communities. But also having it onsite, so as community members are walking around, they're able to visually see what's going to happen or what's being proposed. I think it's gonna make it more equitable. Um, so I'm looking forward to seeing what parameters the commission puts around this. Um, but I think, I, again, thank you so much for taking this on and um, you know, making it as equitable as possible for our community members.
Thanks, Mike. Um, the, what was I just gonna say? Sorry, it's really cold in the room that I'm sitting in right now. Um, my brain is slightly frozen. Um, I'm not in my, I'm not in my house. It's a weird spot. The. Erin, I, I, I just, I wanna make sure, I, I, it's like the third time I'm saying it, but I, I just wanna be sure that. If we add anything, we're adding it for. For a good reason, you know, because it's reaching an audience that we haven't reached in another way or um, because it is. Perhaps a, a change, you know, if, if the Tribune now only goes to, you know, ten percent of the community, but the Woodward Talk goes to a hundred percent of the community, you know, like that. That sort of thing. Um, I, I think that those, those sorts of changes make sense. The, uh, my office is in Birmingham. I certainly see the signs that are posted. Honestly, I, I think they're for zoning changes. I'm not entirely sure. I've certainly seen them for zoning changes in other, in other cities. So this kind of perennial planning question that we're all familiar with of how to get people more engaged. In things like Ferndale Moves or master planning or, you know, perhaps it, it starts with, you know, do we. Mail to a further radius, you know, when we're doing a zoning change or something, you know, I'd, I'd hate to have a sign. Walk away or get blown over or something, but like what are, what are tangible ways that we can get information into people's hands? At the ground level so that they're even aware of what the planning, I mean, like. I'm the world's biggest planning nerd. Of course, I know what the planning commission does, but like, no one else does. So. Yeah, and I, so Erin, I'm, I'm not sure if you mind recommendations from us tonight and other thoughts from the commission, uh, or if maybe you'd like to come back to us in the new year. Um, you know, once Justin's back and you guys are back at, at full strength as a team and say, you know. Here's maybe two things that, that we think would. Would get the word out farther. Because it's this targeted audience or it's this targeted publication or.
Yeah, I think that um, it's probably a little bit of everything. If anybody has any ideas tonight that they. That are their burning ideas that they wanna bring on forth and it's something we can look into, I, I would definitely welcome that. I also um, wanna maybe push it on you guys a little bit too. Um, you know, if you guys know of other communities. Uh, especially in Michigan because we're under the same, um, you know, laws and regulations as far as zoning goes. That are doing this, what are their um, triggers for different types and different levels of community engagement? That would just be really helpful um, to spread the workload a little bit, honestly. Um, so if, if we have some folks that would be willing to uh, volunteer to do that and feel free to just email me, send it my way. It doesn't have to wait until the next planning commission or anything like that. And then, once I start to gather a little bit more information, I can. Probably formally bring it back for um, you know, and speak with Justin to kind of figure out where this would best fit and how we would do that and everything like that and. You know, internally too, um, we have been talking a lot about engagement in general and how much, um, how much work it is. But how much, eh, how much value it brings and um, you know, our current capacity and what that means and um. You know, we're constrained by budget, but we also know that we need a lot of assistance. So how can we leverage, you know, different. Uh, avenues to help with all of that, so. Yeah, I think that if anybody has any recommendations or thoughts this evening, I, I will gladly take them. And then in addition, if. Um, some folks that are really passionate about this could take the time to do a little bit of digging, that would be greatly appreciated.
I'd be happy to, to um, talk with the folks in Birmingham. I definitely know enough people on their staff and planning commission. To find out what their triggers are for their signposting, but they also, they have another thing in, in Birmingham that I've noticed. Where on, even, even on smaller construction sites um, that I walk by in my neighborhood, the, there's kind of like a, it's like a builder's. You know, code of being a good neighbor sort of thing, like these are the sorts of things that. You should expect to see or not see on this construction site and this is who you call. If, if some, you know, that we had a neighbor earlier say that construction was starting at six thirty, well, we know when our, our noise ordinance kicks in at seven, right? So there were, but she might not have known either about the noise ordinance or who to call or, you know, so she now just has kids waking up early and a headache, right? So um, that, I've been meaning to look into that sign in Birmingham about how to be a good neighbor. During a time of change, um, and, and where neighbors should go if something doesn't seem right. Uh, so I'll, I'll take Birmingham for sure. Other commissioners? Commissioner Foster? Oh, someone moved again.
So first off, I did also say that I would look into different notices and triggers. Um, I didn't have that for tonight, but I, I'll certainly look into it. Um, having worked in multiple communities across Michigan on zoning ordinances and zoning departments. I could pull from that experience and definitely present it to the commission. Or to the city staff, so I'm not sure. Should I just send it to you, Erin, or bring it back? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think send it to me because then I can compile everything that uh, everybody gives me and then I can bring that back to you all and we can have a discussion and see what we need to do as far as um, implementing it.
Perfect. And then um. Actually, especially since um, Ms. Elster is still on, it looks like. Um, she had brought up the welcome packet. I was actually gonna bring this up in commission items later, but I think now it really does connect with this conversation in terms of. Potentially being an educational piece and providing some background on development and, you know, she had even been mentioned in terms of. What's needed or what types of projects might trigger um, requirements from the city, et cetera. I think that is, is a nice educational piece and actually when I used to work for the city, we had come across some examples of welcome packets that we used to have. Um, years past. I think we might have talked about it at commission level, or I might have, I remember talking.
We definitely talked about it at council.
Okay, oh, okay. Um, so I, I do think that's a good idea and I thought that we were bringing it back at one point, so I don't know where that's at. But I would just like to kind of second and acknowledge um, Ms. Elster's comment on that. Um, that I think it could be really beneficial in providing some education materials and direct them to, you know, CED resources, et cetera. And then, you know, just once you do have a contact information for the CD department, then it can lead to other answers question. Thought I had a third thing, but I'm forgetting it now still.
Yeah, one of the things that we have been working on in CED in particular is um, this um, Open in Ferndale campaign. And so um, it's targeted for a lot of different things, you know, targeted to business. We are open, like you can open a business in Ferndale. Um, also, we are open as Ferndale, Ferndalians, like we are open people. These are our ethics. This is what we, this is who we are. This is a foundation of what Ferndale means. And then within that, there um, it's, it's a digital space right now. There, you know, there's stories, there's our permit center, um, there's, we're working on this kind of like decision tree. So I, I would like to do this type of development in this type of area and then it, and it will help you kind of figure out exactly what you need. So i- it is along those lines, is like a welcome packet or like helping people kind of walk through the development process and that sort of thing. Um, and also recruitment tool to, you know, recruit more um, types of different people or different organizations or different businesses and so on and so forth. So that's something that Jordan Tordy, the CED director, has been working on um, for the last year to really get up and going. And um, you know, partnership with the DDA, partnership with the chamber. Um, so. In, in a way that's kind of in the works, um, but it, it certainly needs to be um, more well-known that this is what's happening right now.
That's very cool. Thank you. Um, I would say maybe in terms of. I mean, we've been talking about how to reach out to different communities and not just having everything digitally, so maybe some sort of pamphlet or whatnot. I know most people when they buy a house or move to the city have to come to this. I, I think it's changing with the pandemic and everything, you know, obviously is going more digital, but you know, for those that do. Rely more on like a physical kind of copy or, you know, that sort of thing. I think that would be a really great additional component that would. You can market together with that campaign, which sounds really great. So thanks for sharing that.
Thanks, Michelle. Thanks, Erin. Uh, so it sounds like more conversation to come on this in the new year. So a little bit of research on um, on the commission's end. And then uh, when Justin is back, um, the team can kind of sit down together. Some more discussion among the staff um, about where they see some opportunities uh, for, for synergies and for perhaps. Reaching some new audiences or underserved audiences as well. Um, I do wanna make sure we get to our commission items because speaking of um, research done by commissioners, Commissioner Shawalter is about to show out, my goodness. So we had two items um, that Matt raised his hand to, um, to do some additional researching too. And Erin, how are you and Matt gonna, are you gonna tag team the slideshow or is Matt just gonna take over the screen or?
I was gonna say, I made him, I made him a co-host, so he has sharing capabilities.
I love this. This is awesome. Matt, thank you so much. We're gonna move on to item number nine A. Uh, the first of our two commission items um, presented by Commissioner Shawalter. Um, the discussion of architectural material. Um, that came out of a meeting, gosh, maybe two months ago now, um, where we had a pretty generic term. And Matt was looking to refine that term a little bit, so I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Shawalter. You are muted, Commissioner Shawalter. Back it up. You got it. Oh, you're still muted. There you go. Perfect. Thanks, Matt.
Okay, yep. So I was looking at uh, looking at the uh, some of the corrugated metal and the metal panel systems. Uh, it came up. When we were reviewing the uh, that, that like work share space by the train tracks in the industrial area. And just how there's just a lot of confusion and no general consensus on what we, what we agreed on. What a metal, what the acceptable metal panels were. And coming from this, from the uh, from. The standpoint of being an architect and, and looking at codes and figuring out how to get around codes every day. And uh, and interpreting codes and figuring out what, how to give an owner what they want by. Choosing clever interpretations. So uh, in the current ordinance, we allow architectural metal panels. And we call out specifically insulated metal panels, which are, um, which is essentially a sandwich of metal and insulation. And a composite metal panel, which is essentially a plastic and metal pan, uh, sheet metal. Sandwich. And furthermore, can you guys see this, the people on the side? Let me drag it away. Furthermore, um, you, they're also, we prohibit sheet metal or corrugated metal. So. We don't allow sheet metal, but we do allow it if you put a layer of insulation on the inside. Which doesn't really make sense. I mean, it's not like these buildings are being built without en- uh, insulation. Energy code requires insulation, so. So it's, I mean, so this one, the one on the left might be okay. Uh, it's corrugated, so it's a little bit of a gray area, but it's an insulated metal panel. But the one on the right is a definitely corrugated and definitely a sheet metal product. And so I don't know why we would be. Really concerned about uh, the differences between these two unless there, we're, unless when we have. Uh, prohibit sheet metal and corrugated metal, we mean something different. So I'm just trying to get a feeling and during this discussion for what look are we trying to achieve? Do we wanna stop, prohibit galvanized metal decking, which is like your uh, floor deck or like the, the decking that. It looks like a construction product. Do you want, uh, are we trying to prohibit all corrugated looks? Are we trying to uh, expose fasteners, eliminate those? Or do we wanna allow concealed fasteners? What about just modular metal panels? So looking at metal decking, this is kind of more of a DIY industrial look. Um, it's, it's a galvanized, which is a rust resistant metal decking and it usually looks pretty uh. Hazardly tossed up when it is. And this is definitely a corrugated product, but it's not really a very professional looking product. There's also an exposed fastener rain screen system, which is, I, and when I flip by page, that's. This is what I'm, it's the stuff I'm discussing. Uh, the corrugated fastener rain screen systems. Or the exposed fastener rain screen systems, they can come corrugated or they can come uh, flat, but you generally see them corrugated. And they're typically a lower cost system and it's used on a lot of industrial applications, but as you can see in the lower left-hand picture, some multifamily uses it. And I actually know Ferndale House also uses a corrugated metal uh, for cor- exposed fastener corrugated rain screen system. And you can see the fastening screws and it gives it a little bit more of an industrial and lower cost, cost look. But according to the earlier ordinance, all these projects don't meet the current ordinances because they are corrugated and they are a non-insulated product. So this is what I just said. And moving on to kind of the next step up, which will be kind of a concealed fastener range creating screen system. And that is similar to that first page that, where I showed you the difference between the insulated product and the non-insulated product. And on this one, you don't see the screws and it looks more, it looks more cohesive when you look at the actual product. You don't see the seams. It, it's a very, it's, it's more of a, a higher end product and season, and we use it all the time. It's used in a wide variety of applications. But it's also not, there's no insulation behind it. Some of them look corrugated. Depending on your definition of corrugated, the two pictures on the left, are those corrugated or are those planks? It depends how you define corrugated, but they don't have insulation behind them and they're sheet metal products, so they are. Not allowed in our current ordinances. So. Modular metal panels, similar thing. Uh, the, it's, it's not corrugated, but there's no insulation behind it and it's sheet metal. And they can be used to kind of create more interesting metal designs. And those also would not be allowed by our current, current ordinance because they're sheet metal and non-insulated. But if I were looking at any of these products and I had an owner who was really in love with the look. I, all these products come in insulated versions. You can just get the insulated version and throw that up and then you. Then essentially all the planning commission is deciding is what, where does the insulation fall in your wall system? And it's not really affecting the aesthetic of an environment, so. And it's not really affecting the aesthetic of an environment, so if we know what aesthetic we're looking for. We can really cater our, the language in our zoning ordinance to allow what we're looking for. We could, I mean, if we're looking for, uh. If we want to ke- uh, let me stop the corrugated look, then we can keep that in as a prohibited material. But I also don't think that we should say sheet metal isn't allowed, because I think. Based on your definition of sheet metal, it's a pretty wide definition. And, uh, I know s- part of the newer zone based ordinance, so we're kind of. The, uh, new, newer form based ordinance, so I think we're kind of working out some of the kinks. But, uh, if anyone has any like thoughts on what we want to. On what we're looking for, what we should allow as a commission and what we. Should be prohibiting, then I, then we can start to kind of shape some of that language and help staff. Shape the ordinance.
That is super interesting, um, and. That you could achieve. The same look with a different product. And that it seems like. Our prohibition is easily, is easy to get around, is it, is it interesting? Thing that obviously I would not have known, um. Will you, um, flip back to the other view, Matt, so that we can? We can see each other in the.
Oh yeah.
Screen? Thanks. Alright, so this is, um, this specifically came up in our new appearance review standards, I still call it appearance review, I'm sorry, that's not. This is, so some relatively recent changes, um. As we've tried to make sure that we have a better mix of materials and diversify some of the materials that are being used, um. But perhaps we've put too fine a point or not a fine, as fine enough point on some of these things, so. Matt's broad question about what are we going for, I think. Is that kind of where we should start, Matt, like what's the?
I, I think so, I mean, and we were, we kind of touched on it a little bit earlier today, we were talking about lower cost materials and how. Building facades look. Boring, um, and. The reason why building facades look boring is just cost driven, is the developers are looking to get the cheapest building and get as many people in it as possible. And there are certain materials that are cheaper than others and people naturally gravitate towards those materials. So. But I, but I think that, uh, if you're kind of eliminating the use of any metal panel in my mind. And all you're gonna see is EFS board, it's a hardy board and, or EFS instead of metal panel, because that's cheaper than. An insulated or composite material. So.
So we already limit EFS, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, who wants to jump in first, councilman, or Deb, ha ha.
Just, uh, I would just wanna, thanks for putting that together, Matt, and I want to echo, uh, similar concerns, because I know when. A year or more ago, when I was in the situation, uh, you know. Very similar, it, yeah, it, it is easy to. Reinterpret what our, uh, ordinances lay out. And then, you know, potentially come up with materials or concepts that are. One eighty of what our intention is, and so it's, um, it's a challenge because. The more we limit or, or, you know, narrow, narrow a, a designer down into. You know, a, a style or a look, you know, then you do run that risk of it looking boxy or looking. Uh, generic or, or looking like everything else in the block, and so. I, man, I, I am challenged as well, because you're right, like, we don't want it to look cheap, but what. I also have the, the wonder of what do exactly we want? And does that limit the designer so much that yet either they're not building in Ferndale or. Then we end up with something that we absolutely didn't intend, you know, to, to have someone produce.
I feel like, yeah, and I, and I agree, and I think that if we start to eliminate the cheap options, people will just start to. Gravitate towards the next cheapest option, you'll just see the next cheapest option become prevalent in the next year.
Yeah, and it's, it is a really tricky balance, because, you know, as, as specific as we got, or as specific as we thought we were. Um, with the ordinance. For the other building that I was involved in, it, it really, there was a lot of leeway or there was, um. The, the converse of that, which was, it was so specific that it, it really limited what was possible and then, you know, it was, it was. Almost worse, so, um, I know I'm not adding to the solution for this question. Uh, it's just more of an echo that, yeah, I completely agree that this is. Really tricky and challenging and, um, you know, if we get too specific or not specific enough, both. Lend themselves to, um. You know, producing a product, an end product that we may not be happy with.
I think about the, the things that, that Commissioner Cassio used to talk about in terms of. I know he wasn't the only one, but I sat next to him a lot, so, you know, Michael used to talk about, um. You know, the. Un, you know, unintentionally limiting creativity, right, so if you, if you take some things out of someone's toolkit, you might not know. You know, what cool products you would have lost, right, you know, it's so, you know, I think it, it also has to do with. Intent and I, and I can't, you know, like pick only good developers.
No, that's exactly, yeah.
But the intent, you know, someone who wants to do something in a cool way, um, you know, they can find a way to make these materials like. Sing and look really unique, or they can plaster metal on them all.
And that, there are situations I can think of where, um, you know, just. Sheets of metal or corrugated metal are used in funky cool ways to accent buildings that. You wouldn't have necessarily thought of, they may not have been, you know, the, the first option, and yet the way that they were handled turns out very cool. And it's, um. It's hard to say, no, don't use that product, or, or of course we'll use that product, because. Like Matt said, yeah, right, like, you, you have to comply with the, the Michigan building code and have the proper amount of insulation in the walls and. Et cetera, et cetera, but, um, yeah, how, wh- when do you accidentally eliminate the cool factor?
This Brittany, I mean, I think. Your comment though is, is. The, the materials were used in a way to accent the building, I think. The challenge is, is when we just see seas of corrugated. Right, and so I think maybe it's not a, a limitation of the types of materials, but what. What percentage of the total project is made up of that type of material so that we're, um, seeing the. You know, delineation of storefront versus upper stories and, um, really having some texture in the projects that we're seeing.
I do think that we're seeing some better responses to those requirements, I don't, I don't know if you agree, Deb, but in the last year. By, by sort of forcing some of those reductions of different types, I think about the EFS discussion at, at Aiden Woodward, at the. At the Urbain Apartments, for example, you know, like what kind of compromise we came to because of that very specific situation, and it was a material. That typically we don't like, but they used it in a little bit different way for a specific purpose.
Yeah, I was thinking about that one too, and, and Brittany, that's a very good point about, you know, location and, and, um, you know, quantity and. I know that to, um, like our, our, I just kind of off topic, but that, that window requirement for, you know. How, how much window on the, the fronts and sides of buildings, you know, and if it's a building's at a corner and, you know, like, some of that. Uh, gets tricky, it gets challenging to try to, to meet the ordinance, so, um, I. The only, my only hesitation is just trying to figure out, yeah, what's that fine line, you know? How do you manage, um, the balance of, uh, limiting materials or allowing materials and, and to what percentage? Um, without being too so restrictive that you limit creativity.
I think we keep trying to like mandate good design and, and a way to like have some Ferndale character in. Contemporary building materials and then, like, there's just always, people just always have the ability to make it look like boring and cheap. And it's just like, it, it's so frustrating, we've been over and around this and. You know, occasionally, we even saw it in the last couple meetings with smaller residential projects, you know, we'll get one or two things that. Seem to really hit the mark and then a couple of things where you're like, how did you think that that was appropriate?
Like the, the Broad Museum in, at MSU, uh, it's just, you know, it's all, you know, you, one might look at it and say it's all corrugated. Metal, um, and yeah, there are people that, you know, look at it in context against the historical brick buildings in, in the vicinity and. Absolutely hate it and, and can't stand it and, you know, there are other people that say, you know, wow, look at that ingenuity, so it's, it's just, um. We, you know, we always, we talk about, or, you know, like, uh, you know, what is Ferndale or, or what is, what is the vernacular of, of Ferndale? Uh, and, and it's tricky to define and, and that's where I get hung up.
I was actually talking to the, uh, project architect of the Broad Art Museum today, Kevin. And, uh, he was, we, and we were joking that, uh, about, we were talking about this, this discussion. And we were joking about how the Broad Art Museum wouldn't be allowed in Ferndale.
Right, yeah, that, yes, exactly.
Alright, I have to Google this now, because I don't.
It's B R O A D, Art Museum in East Lansing, Michigan.
Got it.
The, it was a building designed by Zaha Hadid and, uh.
Oh, well, that's all you needed to say. Wow. I'm sure it's awesome, um, other commissioners in terms of kind of this broader, you know, what's the essence of, of what we're trying to get at? Because I think we could, you know, we could tinker around the edges and say, you know, eliminate this conversation about. Insulated, and it would be easy to make a couple of changes and say, you know. It's not relevant to call out insulated versus not insulated metal panel, but, um, Krista?
Well, um, just, just to be brief, um, I, I appreciate that, that we want to get rid of ambiguity. And have purpose and, and reason behind what we have in our, um, ordinance and that this is a time for us to really look at. Our exposed fasteners, um, which might be a delineator between. Non insulated or insulated, you know, that's a deal breaker, it looks worse, it looks. Craftsman in a way that we don't want, um, and it, it, um. Brings back thoughts of shacks and stuff, I don't know, I'm just, it's getting late, um, so do we, um, do we make sort of an aesthetic? Call as to, um, what kind of a cor- corrigation, or do we just say, okay, we're okay with metal panel? And maybe we really look, need to look at. I, I think it was, uh, Commissioner Husk, you said, to what extent, I mean, um, Matt used to use the sounding board on a couple of projects, you know. Here's some accents that work really well, you don't notice it's metal panel, it's just another material that gives it some variety. Um, so is that what we're looking for is, um, allowing it, but maybe. Clarifying it and then, um, maybe setting some criteria for how much you can use at once, so you don't just become the new EFS. So I think that's our goal and, and I. I, I'd be willing to support, you know, the idea of, of, of clarifying the language and adding any definitions if we needed to. Because it'll just help the next designer come, come by.
And I, I look at this and I would, if I were looking at this, if I were. Going to build a building in Ferndale now, we're looking at this. I would just stick away from she, I would just, um, stick away from certain materials because they just. It sounds like sheet metal or corrugated metal, that's way too broad of a definition. I'll stay away from it, I'll, I'll build with something that is, something that won't come back and, uh. And bite me three months later. I- if we don't have clear and concise language on what we're looking for and leave way too much up, up to interpretation, it's going to. I, it's, I, I think it's, that is going to make it so. You're going to get less imaginative design, because people will go with what they know is safe.
Yeah, you want to eliminate risk for your client, right, you don't want to have to come back three times to change a design.
And also, also you don't want to promise your client something and then all of a sudden you realize that you interpreted one sentence wrong and you have to. And you have to get. A disappointed client.
I have to say, Matt, I really appreciate your candor, working on the other side of, of these types of projects, working in like the finance world and. Um, project development, it's, it's interesting to hear your perspective, I, I appreciate it.
I was gonna say the same thing, that I really appreciate that we have architects on the commission, because it's certainly not my expertise. Um, I remember and I cannot remember when and if it was. When I was at the city or working, um, as a consultant, but I remember. Wanting to update our architect, architectural guidelines and, um, we had created a. Um, panel of architects that typically work in the area, um, to consult and to give feedback. And I thought that was a really good process, um, I. Since I had left for a couple of years, I think that when this was adopted, I don't necessarily know kind of what happened in terms of. Follow up and if what we have now is a direct result of that, to be honest, I, I apologize, but, um. I think that, um, it's certainly something, especially if we're going to look more comprehensively at some of these guidelines, that I would really recommend we do again. Um, because although it's great to have our, um, expertise from. You know, I think it's just always great to get even more feedback from the community and what we're going, the people that are going to be coming in front of us with projects, so. And I'm sorry, I'm not trying to say that, because it. I certainly, uh, um, appreciate all your expertise, but just remembering what a great experience that was.
Well, and it's, it's rare and intentionally so, that planning commissioners have significant projects in front of the planning mission, you know, it, it happens, obviously. Um, but there are some architects, developers, um, gosh. Service providers even, you know, that work in Ferndale in a very dedicated way, so. The, they've, and they've also, well, I mean, when, if you've. I think about, um, Scott Helmer, for example, right, who was here maybe a year ago, um. Doing a townhouse development on the northeast side, um, just off of Hilton. And so here's someone who grew up here, had lived here, owns many residential properties here as a landlord. Um, and is now sort of upgrading, flipping, changing, like trying to figure out what he's doing with some of those properties. Not only does, does Scott, you know, and a former planning commissioner, frankly, like not only does, does he need to work within our ordinance, but he needs to work within our. Community, right, so I, I think there's, there's people who, they're getting feedback from their neighbors, from their residents, from their tenants, like. They, they're, they're not dumb, they know, they know what, what people are saying, as opposed to someone who maybe is just kind of like plunked here. And has never worked in Ferndale before and is like, I had no idea that they were gonna come with the pitchforks, and it's like. You know, people who, who do work here a lot, they, they, they know and I think they try hard to be context sensitive and finding a couple of. Of those folks who seem to get it, you know, like I said, we can't like pick who our. Who our applicants are, but maybe we can pick, you know, to your point, who are. Consultants or advisors, like, what, what do we really like that just got built and how did they figure it out?
Exactly, and I think to Showalter's point, um. When you are gonna be working in the community and you're just looking at the ordinance, if there's ambiguity or whatnot, then. It's going to reduce the amount of, um, creativity that you might put into the project, but if they're involved in the process and forming it and then. Continue to be involved in it, then they have just a better idea and they might come to us with, and we just might get a better result in terms of. Um, what we're seeing in design, so I think it's a really great point that he brought up.
Through the chair, um, so for me, what I find. Um, most obvious between the insulated and non is, is sound transference, um, you brought up, um. Uh, Ferndale House and, um, I, I can only imagine that if I was living in there and, and. You know, my wall, my outside wall was uninsulated, um, uh, sheet metal. Um, corrugated, that in a rain or a windstorm, um, you know, that's gonna transfer sound.
There will be a little bit more drum beat from a rain, but you still have a continuous barrier of insulation around. It's whether it's smacked up right next to the metal or brought three inches back. And if it's, you're still going to have your building shell wrapped with insulation. And that's, and that insulation will still provide sound deadening property, sound deadening properties. It's, I mean, it, 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 by calling out where the insulation is on the panel, yes, uh, but you are right. Having an insulated metal panel will be a quieter product.
Yeah.
But it.
But I also think that. Yeah, I also think it matters in the, in, in the application, um, as I think, um, uh. Commissioner Husk, you mentioned, you know, is it, uh, uh, a, a second floor, um. Uh, facade or is it, um, not. uh, facade or is it, um, not a facade, but, um, what is it? Just a decorative, you know, upper level where there's nothing behind it? Or is it, you know, the main, main floor, you know, where everyone you know, has an impact as well, you know, the aesthetics of, you know, how close you are to it or, um, uh, and how it's used. I personally do not like any of that kind of steel metal in, in uses. And especially for Ferndale, because as, um, a- a- as Mike Flores says, you know, at some point you start losing the character of the community. Um, you know, 30 years ago, you know, you didn't have that kind of use for metal. Um, a- and I understand a lot of it has become, um, used to, to reduce costs. But a- at what cost then, you know, do we have it to our community? Do, do we all of a sudden start transforming, you know, 40, 50% of our downtown from predominantly brick and stone to metal?
Well, you're not going to get these projects that are viable from a cost perspective if you build a masonry box. That is not caught, masons are expensive. Uh, it's supporting windows with, with steel lintels above it, uh, to support the brick. That's expensive.
Oh, I, I get it. I, I.
Yeah, it's just, it's just kind of a unfortunate reality of labor is expensive, masonry is expensive. And I, one thing I really appreciated about that project earlier is that they, uh, about the, uh, the B U D is the fact that they put a large masonry mass in the front. Like they, they didn't try to skip up higher.
Yep.
Um, because those.
And they used the, you know, Hardyboard, um, you know, which is, which is another option.
Yeah, I, eh.
I think.
You feel about Hardyboy like I, Hardyboard like I feel about, about steel.
But I think the, I think the examples that we're using are using a blend of materials as opposed to some of the examples of, that we don't like, that, you know, Councilman and Polka mentioned, are examples where there's a, there's a significant amount of one type of material that's making up that development, right? And so I think it's about the, the amount of material that's being used. I agree, you know, brickwork would be ideal, um, particularly in our, in our downtown area, but it's cost prohibitive. Um, and I think, you know, however, we saw a project that is deeply affordable, that's being able to, you know, make the numbers work and, and, and you know, there's, there's always a way. I think our focus really needs to be on identifying the projects that are the best project for the site and for our community. Um, because I know that our economic development staff, both at the local and state level can, can, can help the project come to fruition as long as it's the right project for the site. And I think projects with affordability and green space, these are all hallmarks of, of, of projects that we're looking for. And I think other, um, other local and state partners would be as well.
Commissioner Haskew, I've got a, a quick question. Sorry. Um, Brittany, we, I mean, we, we have specified, you know, some percentages of different types of materials and you can't exceed such and such and different facades. But would you, I mean, what would be your feeling if we, if we prohibited? Maybe we didn't prohibit any materials maybe, or maybe very, very few. Um, but we really emphasized the ones that we did like, you know, sort of like, like you're saying, rein in a small detail, let someone be creative. Um, do we, do we not prohibit any materials or maybe just a very few?
I.
I, I don't know if I'm taking Brittany's comment too far, like if, if that's kind of like the logical next step or if I'm overstepping.
I think it's an interesting next step, but also you're going to get vinyl siding on commercial buildings.
Oh, God, I hate vinyl siding. Yeah, like that's not gonna happen.
No, no, no.
I, I'm, I'm just saying that you don't prohibit materials.
Yeah.
It's good. Thank you, Matt. That's a good point. Yeah. Yeah. No, that's not gonna happen. Um, so, okay, so maybe I was going too far. Sorry, Brittany. Um, I was, I was just thinking like, is there, is there an art, a case to be made for allowing nearly anything but emphasizing the things that you want?
I mean, I really defer to the architects on the commission because I feel like they're the ones that can communicate how, how it's going to be interpreted and applied in projects. I'm just trying to identify consistencies in what we have, what the examples that have been elevated as good examples versus the examples that have been elevated as bad examples.
And, yeah, I, I agree with Matt. You're gonna end up with vinyl siding on, on the buildings, uh, and metal panels. But, uh, if, if, if it was, uh, kind of that formula of, you know, no more than 30% of X material or, you know, that, or, or, um, an overall percentage or, or something, um, you know, in, in that range, I'm sure that you could still, that, who knows? And you know, you're right, like who knows what future products might be. Maybe there is a vinyl product five years from now that is, you know, all the rage, that doesn't look like vinyl, but still cleans up and et cetera, et cetera. We don't necessarily want to, um, get rid of a product that it hasn't been invented yet. Uh, you know, just because we don't like it right now. So, ye- yes, I, I think that there is some way to manage, you know, what our preferences are and, you know, balance that against the overall percentage of the billing. Um, and like we were talking about earlier, you know, I think it was Krista that who said, you know, like then it's not just all one big flat plane of the material. At least then you can add in some variety and, and, you know, get some, some changes that you might not be able to achieve. Um, you know, with actual like building walls, you might not be able to move the walls, but maybe you can change the material and it, it gives some variety to the facade.
So how do we bring this one home? Um, Erin and Matt, the, I, I mean, I was clearly this was a, this was a discussion. We weren't gonna, you know, rewrite an ordinance at the table. But, um, uh, what's the, what's, I, I guess, what's the, the desired outcome? Um, do we want to still work on cleaning up some ordinance language when it comes to specific materials? Like getting rid of some things that don't make sense about insulated versus non-insulated. That's low hanging fruit. Um, and then, excuse me, maybe come back in a slightly more formal way to this conversation about perhaps, you know, formally prohibited materials being included as details or in small. I, I, I don't, I don't want to get too far down a conversation path without it being, you know, it's sort of through the proper, proper channels.
I think that it needs to be, it sounds like there are definitely clarifications and it needs to be cleaned up. So if we could have, um, some recommendations on what, what may, how we should word it? How we should word the current, how it currently is to maybe prohibit the things that we don't like or to make it clear for what we do like and, and that sort of thing and what we like. I mean, like what we allow for. Um, I personally think that in doing the reviews for a lot of these, um, projects, that having that chart and saying, you know, percentages and what is acceptable and that sort of thing is really useful. A lot of the developers really like that. Um, so I think that that's something that, that component of it I would like to keep. Um, and I think that along the lines of Commissioner Haskew talking about, um, percentages and, um, variation are, are, have been successful. Um, so I think that really guidance on exactly what type of materials we would like to include or like to prohibit or put certain percentages to is what I would need guidance on. And I think that to Commissioner Foster's point of having a, um, you know, having the folks that are actually doing this work, like kind of weigh in on it makes a lot of sense because I'm not an architect. I don't know. I don't know the intricacies. I, I didn't even know that this was an issue until, um, Commissioner Schalter brought it up. So, um, some guidance would be helpful on that. Um, that's, that's what I think would be helpful. Um, and then, and then we can bring it back to the planning commission for a formal adoption, um, and update to the ordinance. I'm also open to other people's opinions, but I think that, um, those are the few things that I think that would be helpful for staff.
Are these items that we should just try to maybe sharpshoot specific items? And eventually it will start to morph into something we want? Or we, do we, are we looking to do, do a more broad discussion on this?
Well, I mean, we.
No.
We just adopted the ordinance, didn't we? What, like?
Yeah, not too long ago. It was last year sometime.
And we knew it would, we knew it would need tweaks. I mean, to be.
Yep. Yeah. I think that if we know a hundred percent, like this, this language and this description does not make sense, then we can omit it, get rid of it. Let's not use it anymore and make those edits. If we do think there needs to be an overhaul, um, a complete overhaul, then, um, that's, that'll certainly take more time. Um, but if we have immediate things that we, if it's just a clarification that we can, and we can still reach what we want to reach, then I don't know.
In, in my opinion, I think that, um, let me just share this real quick. Looking at this, I think if we eliminate the word sheet metal and we can keep, it sounds like everyone seems to not really have a good taste in their mouth about corrugated metal. That seems to be the general consensus then, kind of feeling. But if we eliminate sheet metal and just make it corrugated metal and we add, uh, and we add, um, our, like our metal rain screen system or something underneath here, then we can get away from them being able to just throw insulation on it. So it's, it's kind of like all or nothing to me. Uh, it's like, do we either, we either allow all different types of metal panel or we, or we don't allow any of it?
Even in a small percentage? I mean, I'm, so I'm thinking about, sorry to, to come back to a different example, but like in our, in our industry, if we started doing upper story residential, to pick one of our other favorite things, that was just for you, Ian, upper story residential, um, in our industrial district. Um, what if someone wants to put a little, um, a little balcony cover or, you know, some type of detail over something that I would think is totally context appropriate to have some type of corrugated metal as a detail, and, you know, on a mixed use industrial or residential facade, given where it is.
Well, let me, uh, go ahead and share real quick. This chart doesn't really tell you necessarily where it needs to be or the percentages. This just tells you, is this allowed or is this not allowed? And so what we're saying right now is metal rain screen systems that, that aren't insulated or composite, which probably we, this is really expensive. Um, you're, you're going to, you, that's just saying, nope, it's out if it's not those two. And do we want to allow it? And we're already kind of limiting it in industrial by allowing it to be, where, I mean, we're allowing it to be both a primary and secondary, but we're only allowing it to be secondary materials and multifamily and commercial mixed use. Um, so do we want to? I mean, we could just, um, allow a metal panel, but we could eliminate the corrugated look if that's what everyone is reacting negatively to. Or we can bring this back to have a deeper discussion of what should we be allowing and what shouldn't we be allowing?
Just to for clarification, it's a primary and secondary material, not facade, correct?
Um, not a hundred percent sure on that one.
Okay.
I think, I think it's a material that.
Okay, so we could have it on the primary facade, um, just as a secondary material, meaning not the majority, right?
Look that up real quick. Um, I don't, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
It's written as material. Um.
Okay.
Yeah, it's based on the primary and second materials allowed, um, as percentages.
Okay. Well, I think we definitely want to clean up the insulated language, right? Sorry, Commissioner Foster? Continue on your thought. I'm sorry, Michelle. Go ahead.
That's okay. Um, I guess what I was getting at with the primary and secondary, so are we saying that, um, it's not necessarily doable to have a commercial mixed, I mean, mixed, mixed, so I guess I was just reading commercial at first. I would almost argue that commercial and mixed use should maybe be separated here. Um, and so for that argument sake, maybe just thinking of commercial, um, I was thinking that a commercial building, um, wouldn't be, it wouldn't be like affordable or allow, I guess, what's the argument against just having the masonry or concrete as the primary with allowing the metal and other siding, whatnot, as a secondary material? And again, I guess if we include mixed use in there, maybe that's a different argument. Or institutional, for example, that museum was institutional design, but I guess more so, I, can we just constitute it in commercial for a reason? Can you reiterate the reasons why we would want to include metal as a primary material?
I don't think we necessarily want to consider metal as a primary material. I think it's fine having brick, masonry and concrete as a primary material. I think, I think that, but what we're saying is, we're saying that in the entire city of Ferndale, we do not want any non-insulated or non-composite metal panel anywhere.
Gotcha. Okay. Sorry. Yep.
And so whether it be primary and industrial or secondary everywhere else, we just don't want it anywhere, which I think is kind of a little bit. I don't know.
I see what you're thinking. Okay. And so I agree, and I'll leave that to the architects.
Yeah, I don't, I don't get the sense that we're gonna put a bow on this once a night, um, because it's nine thirty and we got one more thing to go. So.
Okay, let, let's, uh, let's do the next one real quick. It will be a short one.
Let's take a look at item number nine B. This is discussion of fences.
Yep.
I love the pictures. I think we all have something like this near us.
Yeah, our current ordinance, we scaled back a lot in the fence language a few years back. And I think we scaled back a little bit too much because cer- certain things that shouldn't be happening are happening with fences. This is one that I pass relatively frequently and the rusty old fence, they didn't want to see it anymore. So they just, the same owner who owns the rusty old fence, put up a nice vinyl fence that they can look at and the rest of the public has to look at this rusty old fence. And there's nothing code enforcement can do about it because they, the, this rusty old fence's owner, who owns both of these fences, you can't cut down their property. So people, this isn't someone's backyard, so their kids are playing around rusty old fence all the time, nothing they can do. Um, it's not maintained. You have stuff being, growing in the middle of it and they just spray round up on it once in a while to kill everything. And, uh, you have trees growing in between there. I just think that maybe a- adding some language that would say one, um, one fence per property line would be an acceptable change like that, that would at least address this issue. I don't know if there's other fence issues that people are having, but I at least think, thinking that maybe borrowing some language about one fence per property line from another, um, nearby city would, uh, would be appropriate.
We used to have an entire board of fence reviewers.
Sounds ridiculous.
Right? Good fences make good neighbors, right? Um, uh, Ian, can I put you, or I'm sorry, uh, were, were you done, Matt?
Yep, I'm done.
Okay, I'm gonna see, Ian, can I put you on the spot? Do you guys get fence issues at the zoning board with any, with any regularity?
We really don't, but I have to say I one hundred percent agree with, uh, uh, this issue that Matt's bringing to our attention. Um, I, I've lived in homes in Ferndale where we've had that same issue, where there have been fences on the lot line basically butting up against each other. Uh, you know, a, um, legacy chain link fence that's rusted out, that someone wrapped a wood fence over the top of that is now deteriorating. Uh, then maybe at the back of the lot in my previous house, there were like three fences back there. Like as they got worse and worse, people would just sandwich them between a new fence. Um, it's, uh, it, it is really unsightly. I have had the issue of trees growing up in between those fences. Um, the reason that we don't get fence issues like this in front of the, um, zoning board, frankly, is because there's, what, what can we do? I mean, there isn't anything that precludes people from putting six fences all sandwiched together if they want.
I agree with Matt's recommendation. I don't know how we would implement it, but it seems to make a lot of sense.
I think say, I think saying one fence per property line is appropriate.
I, I think it gets a little tricky in some situations. For example, um, a very dear friend of mine has a, um, a hoarder, um, uh, both interior and exterior hoarder for a neighbor and has been dealing with that person for years. Unfortunately, the, the chain link fence is on that person's property and the guy wouldn't let my friend remove it to put up. So she was forced to put up a wood fence, a privacy fence, so that she didn't have to look at the junk. That this guy, you know, puts in his backyard every time. And, and every couple of weeks, code enforcement comes down, talks to the guy, the guy moves a few things around. I think Aaron knows who I'm talking about. Um, and, and then, you know, weeks later, it becomes a hoard and some of it's a food hoard. Um, so. It, it's, it's unfortunately not always a clean situation.
Well, could, one fence, one, at least maybe one fence per property, per property line.
That makes sense.
So if you're, if your neighbor has an unsightly fence, you can at least block it up. And if there's a tree that grows in between there, you guys created that problem, you can deal with it.
But you can't stack fences on your own property.
Can't stack fences on your own property. You can't, you can't put the nice fence that you look at and let the rest of the city look at your crappy old rusty fence.
I agree with you there.
Yeah, I, I definitely agree with the intent. I'm not exactly sure how to implement it, but I think, yeah.
So I like, I like that idea. I think that we're on to something with that in respect to one. One fence per property, per property line. Because whenever we would see new fences come in. We would have to make sure that the old fences would be removed. So I think that that might be something that we could look at to see if we could. We could implement something like that. I mean, obviously I have to talk to Dan Chris and see what we're legally permitted to do. But I think that that is something that we could perhaps look into.
We don't require that a fence be inspected. You don't have to, if. A fence, um, you don't have to, uh, request a permit, uh, so. And that's required.
We don't, we don't need a permit anymore?
I think we do have a fence permit.
I think we do. I think we just don't have review board.
Yeah, we still have a fence permit.
A fence permit was recently adopted last year.
Oh, was it? Okay, cuz I'm going by when I put up my fence about twelve years ago. I didn't need a permit. Thing fence. I know that at the time, you needed a permit if you were putting in a new fence. But if you were replacing an existing fence, you didn't need to.
Aaron, will you take a look at this one? I think this is.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
A little easier to solve, yeah.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we, I mean, we definitely have a fence permit and I'm pretty sure that we have to have one regardless, like. Regardless if it's just, if it's, if it's a new fence, even if it's replacing an existing fence. I think we still have the regulations for a fence permit.
Well, the fence permit would only have to, to require you to follow the ordinance, which would be all four of those very, very light. It says fences can't be more than six high, the fences have to be, uh, posts have to be below frost line. They should, that you can't have fences that are, um, on certain lot lines. And, uh, and that you have to, uh, have it. Uh, work with the International Property Maintenance Code, whatever that means. And it doesn't have enough to, it doesn't really, I looked at that and didn't have enough teeth to not allow two fences like that.
And that's just for residential?
It's, that's section twenty-four dash one eight nine. That's the only thing it talks about in terms of fences. Uh, so I think that that might be residential only.
Um, so I think we've got a raised hand. Um, we, I mean, we normally do discussion, but we're, I think we're just about wrapping up. I see Evelyn Elster. Am I seeing a raised hand? Yes?
Yes, thank you.
Ah, welcome, yep.
Uh, I applaud. Your efforts to. Regulate aesthetics. It's an impossible job and thank you for your efforts. And in regards to the fence. The Madison Heights example. Was excellent, assuming that you will allow more than one fence. And the Hazel Park. Example was intriguing. Uh, nobody expected the Spanish Inquisition and. Nobody expected bully flippers to come in and try to do a land grab, but it happens. In the Berkeley example. Of four inches above grade. For rat, our rat issues, if, if you do allow a, a double fence. For rat issues, I would go six to eight inches cuz then you could get a weed whacker underneath. To take care of. The flotsam and jetsam that's gonna grow up in between. And, uh, on the, and also in the Berkeley code, number thirteen, yes, the unfinished side would go. Toward the new property. Toward the new fence owner. And. I, I agree, this is a mess. And, and what would you do about? The grandfathered fences that are already in existence? And how could you possibly regulate one person's fence, the, the property line? And the, the chain link fence that has been there forever? That you would allow that to be removed so that. This bully flipper could come in and cut it down and put in their privacy fence. That's, that's getting on the ugly side of something. And by the way, I love the Pitchfork reference. Being as I've been on the handle of the Pitchfork myself.
That one was just for you and I, I appreciate your. I appreciate your compliment about regulating aesthetics. It is hard and we are trying.
That's, that's a tough call.
Thanks for hanging out with us till the end, Evelyn. Thank you. All right. I mean, fences are fun. That's why we had like a whole board of fence review, right? I mean, when I said like good fences make good neighbors, that is a true statement. And, you know, obviously what Matt and other people are seeing in their backyards is not a good neighbor, so. Yeah, Aaron, I think this could be a fun one for, for early in the new year.
Yeah, we've been talking about fences too, just being a few interesting requests, especially like in our commercial districts. So we, I think we need to clean up a few things with like our screening and our fences and what that means and, yeah.
So my sense is we've got a bigger conversation to come on architectural, architectural material. But there are probably a, a couple of things that are, are easy to redline, but then there's maybe a bigger conversation in a more formal way. And then that city staff could maybe bring back to us. With, you know, s- speed as is appropriate to staffing levels and other demands. A, just, just cuz I don't know always what those are. Like, I didn't know Justin was gonna get. A, uh, fence update. Cool. Matt, this was so fun. Yay, Commissioner Shell Walter. Thank you. This was, this was, I really very appreciated and I hope, did you have fun doing it? I had fun learning about it.
It, it was fine. I just, I'm, I'm busy at work these days, so.
You're like, I had these pet peeves, I wanted to get out and then it was work. Yeah, I feel you. Thank you. Very appreciated. We have a lot of commissioners who sit on, on subcommittees or on, you know, um, our liaisons to other standing committees or boards. And, um, so there's, you know, there's a lot of work that I know you guys do that isn't just at this table, so thank you. Very much. Um, anything, Aaron from the city before we adjourn?
Uh, I feel like we were going to ask the commission on whether or not people would be available for the first meeting in.
In January?
In January, because that falls on, I believe it's the sixth, yes, January sixth. And, um, it was nothing to really do with anything other than if people were available. Um, so if a lot of people are away and we can't make quorum, we'll just reschedule and, um, but if folks are gonna be around, business as usual.
Well, and just to remind everyone, um, that we will continue to meet virtually into the new year. So I think that was also a big part of the initial conversation. Was, you know, sort of safety of meeting in person, um, given that we are a, a larger. Group than the council and us really not wanting to go first. And you just, a, a few commissioners just had concerns in general about getting together in person. So if, if we're still virtual in January and you're not able to make it, please let Aaron know. But Aaron, as of right now.
I can tell you definitively that I'm not available, Aaron.
I was, well, I was about to say, I was about to say, I do believe we still have one more meeting in December, so Ian's not. Do you think we'll have a meeting on the sixteenth at this point, Aaron? Does it look like we'll have anything on the calendar?
We have, um, another potential, so the dot, um. The residential component of the development, um, they want to have a discussion with the planning commission. So I, I haven't received any of their information yet. I haven't gotten confirmation. Um, they have until next week to let me know. But that could be potentially something, um, as far as a discussion. And then, and little things here and there, if they come up, if people, um, end up submitting their plans and, and that sort of thing. But, um, otherwise, that's really the only thing I know of, um, definitively.
Okay. So it is, it is hopeful that we will see Ian one more time. Is that, is that what I'm hearing? We, we may, we may likely have a meeting on the sixteenth, okay. But if we don't, it's holiday season. I'm sure no one's gonna, you know. No one's gonna, no, Aaron, I wanted a meeting. All right, anything else from commissioners before we go?
Uh, through the chair, uh, just want to remind everybody that, uh, this month for city council, we only have one meeting day. By charter, we have to have two meetings in the month of December. However, we combined, uh, the seventh and the twenty-first meeting. Onto the, uh, fourteenth, so we will have a. On the seventh, um, meeting, um, and that meeting, we usually. Do a, um, a mid-year review of the budget. And then at seven o'clock, we'll have the, um, uh, a standard meeting, um, which would have taken place. Of the, uh, meeting on the, the, I'm sorry, on the twenty-first.
I was just gonna say, I think it's the twenty-first.
Yeah, I, 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 looking at the wrong calendar, actually. Uh, so the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth are combined on the twenty-first. So we'll have a six thirty PM meeting on the twenty-first, uh, that will be for budget, uh, mid-year budget review. And then at seven o'clock will be a standard meeting, um, uh, for, uh. The last of the year. It's, uh, so that's, I just want to let everybody know.
All right, anything else from other commissioners before we head out? Awesome. All right, I hope everyone is staying safe and healthy this holiday season. Shall see you, um, possibly on the sixteenth. So thanks. Have a good evening. We are adjourned.
Thanks for inviting me.